Okay, just before I begin mine, just an announcement. We are going, our next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Supervisors will be at the high school in the library. So, those of you that are going to come here, we won't be here, we'll be over there. So, we're going to start kind of like we did a few years ago about changing different locations and we're going to be here, Klamath, Gasky, Smith River, Fort Dick, and at the high school. So, we'll be at the high school in two weeks. Attended a local transportation commission meeting, got an opportunity to see, one of the issues would come up with Caltrans and in Delano County, there's been a lot of fatalities on 101 North, usually crossing that, so now, Caltrans has actually adopted part of that as a safety project to work on some type of crossing mechanism and to slow traffic down on the north end of town. At the same time, we have a study going on right now on traffic calming also for the south end of town as well. So, we got a chance to see the specs on that and it's encouraging because that is going to be an ongoing problem otherwise. Had a meeting with Grant Werchool with the Smith River Alliance regarding the inter-agency visitor center and that looks like that's continuing to push along and that could be relocated down at the harbor and would involve a lot of agencies. I think Redwood National State Parks would, they've agreed to step forward and do the operations and maintenance of it, which is big and I believe the chamber's involved in a couple other, it's got multiple agencies in it. So, as we go along, hopefully we'll be able to find the funding to actually build it. Attended the youth basketball awards deal and I can't say enough positive things about John Horner and that recreation program. They've done a lot of positive things. For those of you who've seen kids or grandkids in it, you can see that every year he's made some changes and made it a little bit better every year. So, big turnout, too many kids to individually recognize, but they do all get medallions and stuff, so it was, it was a pretty cool event. Attended the David Crockett's funeral, it was really well attended. It was cool to see some other stuff that I wasn't aware he'd done in his lifetime. So, that was, that was a pretty impressive memorial service. Accidentally attended the Area 1 Agency on Aging Public Hearing they had in Delano County, wasn't aware, found out that day that it's here. They did a really poor job of notifying the local public there. There was maybe 12, 15 people there. One of the questions that did come up, one of the problems we run to on a regular basis is our budget is lumped together with Humboldt County. And so, we asked breakdown of how much money is actually spent here in Delano County because there are some really good things. The Meals on Wheels through the senior center and some other things are provided by funds coming out of the Area 1, but they don't do a breakdown about what gets spent in Delano versus Humboldt County. And I know their services down there are very expansive, they have an adult day healthcare, which we don't have up here. Anyway, we're going to pursue that further to see what is the actual breakdown of money being spent in Delano County. The, also attended the Solid Waste Meeting with the rest of the supervisors, going to, let's see, also went to several productions of Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory and our director personnel, Joey Young's one of the directors as well as Marshall Jones and they've done a great job with it. Obviously, from my perspective, the best parts of the Oompa Loompa scene with 25 little kids out there and if you get a chance to see it, it is definitely worth going. They've got performances on Friday, Saturday, and they have two performances on Sunday. So, really, a really cool, cool play. So, and at that going, at this point, we're going to, that's it from me, go on to our brief report from the county administrative officer, Jay Serena.
Brief report.
Yeah.
Currently, in administration, myself, Joey Young, Neil Lopez are reviewing the broker services RFPs that were previously, the RFP was approved by the Board of Supervisors. Ultimately be assisting in looking at all of our claims and our health plan. We were, noticed yesterday that we did receive an award for the tire derived product grant that was in conjunction with the wellness center. That's for the playground plan over there as well as replacement for chips on our playgrounds as they become available or they wear out, then we'll be replacing our wood chips with the fiber, the rubber fiber. Yesterday, we received a letter from our, or an email from our federal advocate requesting that we send letters to all of our legislators and basically outlining what we are requesting or requesting support for, for the fiscal year 13. It's a programmatic request and it's going to be completely based on the ledge platform that was approved at the last meeting by the Board of Supervisors. This allowed us to turn that over in a matter of a couple of hours with the assistance of the clerk of the board. So, the policies and goals of the Board of Supervisors have already been reiterated to our advocates and will be going to the legislators probably today. So, about a 24-hour turnaround on that. We are presently working with the Resegini Rancheria and they have asked for an MOU regarding road maintenance related to the East Klamath Beach Road. It's very similar to what we do with Smith River, Rock Valley, and the Uroch Tribe. And so, I would anticipate having something before the board at the next meeting. They've reviewed the MOU that we have, I believe it was with the Smith River. It's identical to the other two tribes and they were happy with that, so we'll be looking at a partnership with them on that road. It would allow them to do some fog lines and striping and maybe even some resurfacing out there and they would be using federal money that's allocated only to tribes. We will be attending a meeting, I believe it's next week, in Humboldt County regarding the Red Mountain Lookout. It's an update by the state departments. In conjunction with that, I did have a meeting with the new old administrator for the Uroch Tribe, Troy Fletcher is now there permanently. Had a good meeting with him discussing a number of issues and Red Mountain is one of those and it is a sensitive issue for the tribe, but we'll be getting an update as to where the state stands at this point. And I'll be attending a meeting with some of the north coast CAOs along with Neil Lopez here at the end of the month. The Townsite Boat Launch, we will be processing the final billing and then we'll be looking at whatever negotiations we have for that final billing as it comes in. That project is obviously done and we believe that it's complete and we'll be paying for what services have been rendered, but we may have some discussions. And then there will be a ribbon cutting that will coincide with the Board of Supervisors' meeting in Klamath. We will do that after that meeting and hopefully it will not rain. It'll be nice out and we'll be able to go down and look at a very nice facility that's going to be able to benefit the entire community, tribal fishermen, sport fishermen, the general public at large.
That's it?
Brief.
Okay, thanks Jay. Okay, at this point, I'm actually going to move the budget transfer forward and I'll entertain a motion to pass the budget transfer.
Move to approve budget transfer 0302.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any public comment on the budget transfer? Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, okay, going on to the consent agenda. At this point, I'll open public comment for any item on the consent agenda. Yes. And if you could state your name for, for the record and limit it to three minutes or less, please.
Eileen, good day. Eileen Cooper, I'm commenting on item six. It's kind of far away. Okay. Thank you. Which concerns a recommendation for Talawoodin State Park, including, relevant to the area at the Endapala Road and Yontucket, which is an area that I would like this board to recognize that is on the National Historic Register, that entire area. And certainly, you must be aware of the huge controversy and that this is not an appropriate item for a consent agenda regarding this item. Only one year ago, State Parks met with the community at large for consideration of changing the designation of this area and quickly became aware of a great controversy within the community regarding the reintroduction of hunting in this area, which is part of your letter in concern. And, also, having respectful activities, which unfortunately, as you may be aware, the grazing situation out there at the end has been conducted with great violations of coastal policies to wetlands and the grading of which was not permitted by parks but continued to go on for many years and that fees were not paid for grazing in that area. And most importantly, when we met with Parks a year ago, they expressed very clearly that this was highly controversial, that the Smith River Rancheria did not want a land designation change. And out of respect for the community at large, including the overall environmental community, the Lake Earl Laguna Alliance, which is composed of thousands of members of the Pacific Northwest between Humboldt and Del Norte County, including the Sierra Club, the Audubon Society, the Friends of Del Norte, and other various constituents, the NEC, that we were, expressed very clearly that we did not feel these recommendations were, were in line with the spirit of what should be a National Historic Park.
Ms. Cooper, could I get you a, wrap up?
So, I just, okay, I will wrap up that.
Thirty seconds.
This is not an appropriate item for a consent agenda, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on consent agenda items only? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved in second. Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Can I comment on something?
Sure.
Item number five, which is to approve the Coast to Coast Prescription Discount. Some time ago, we brought back from NACO, National Association of Counties, prescription drug program that was very beneficial to all the constituents, whether you were a member of the county family or constituent at large. This here is a program that's even better and is being brought to us through CSAC, through CSAC Financial Corporation. Not only will you get your, is it open to everybody in the county, it benefits you by a reduction in the cost, so you're going to pay for your prescriptions as well as dental, visions, but it also allows for the county to receive a stipend from those companies where you realize savings. So, it's a double win. Not only are you going to save more than you would have on the other program, but the county also benefits. Just wanted to throw a plug in there for CSAC and some representation that brought home benefits to our constituents.
Okay. Could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, we will move on to our timed item of public comment.
Supervisor Sullivan.
Yes, oh, we have an, that's right, we have a, we have a proclamation, so if Supervisor McClure could read the proclamation past during the consent agenda.
I would be honored to. This proclamation, the Board of Supervisors, County of Del Norte, State of California Proclamation, proclaiming April 14th, 2012 as the day of the distinguished young woman. Whereas the distinguished young woman scholarship program will be held this year on Saturday, April 14th, 2012. And whereas the participants of the distinguished young woman scholarship program are judged on the merit of the following, an interview and presentation areas, scholastic fitness, self-expression, talent, and a judge's interview. And whereas distinguished young women participants are held to the highest of standards and have shown a greater rate of success than their peers. And whereas the girls in their junior year of high school all over the nation participate in this wonderful program. Now, therefore, the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims April 14th, 2012, as the day of the distinguished young woman in honor of the participants of the class of 2013. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors wishes the participants the best of luck and congratulates and encourages them to always do their best. Passed and adopted on this day, 13th, the 13th day of March, 2012.
Barbara, we're here to talk. Do we have a couple comments?
Sure.
Okay.
I like the new name. Isn't it long? Sometimes hard to say. As always, we thank you very much for making this day so aware to the community. This program is wonderful, I've been involved with it for about 12 years. And unfortunately, Deborah, right, who is the director, this will be her last year and her daughter's going to be in the program next year, so she can't do it in the future. But I have the honor of taking over next year and I have some big shoes to fill. But this year, we have nine girls and they are wonderful and talented and we are very proud to have them represent our county if any of them go on to state. So, again, thank you very much for making this proclamation.
Barbara, do you want to clarify just for the audience and members of the public that are listening, what the distinguished young woman's deal is because the name changed this year?
Okay, so, this program used to be called America's Junior Miss and it's a scholarship program. It's not a pageant, which a lot of people think, but like the proclamation said, it's, it's a program that allows women to, or young ladies, to perform on stage. They are judged on the interviews, they're judged on scholastic fitness, self-expression, which is where they have a question that they have to answer. So, it is a little bit like a pageant, but it's all based on scholarships and, and their scholastics. So, it's once, once a year, every April, and then whoever wins goes on to state and there's 50, 60 other girls that they have to compete against. But it's a program for girls who are juniors in high school, they have to have a 3.0 and it's just a wonderful program.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay, so, at this point, we are going to go to public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less and please give your name into the microphone when, when you do come up. So, at this point, any public comment?
Hi, my name is Summer Moore Clausen, I'm in District 2. I am the Chair of California United Home Care Workers in Del Norte County. I'd just like to bring to attention to the board about our workers and their care for the hundreds of disabled seniors, vets, and children in this county. Our workers allow them to stay in their home as to being shipped to places out of the state, maybe in different counties, away from their families. Our workers aren't in it for the glory, they're not in it to thinking they're going to make large amounts of money. They don't get any days off, they don't get vacation pay, they don't get reimbursed for the traveling expenses when they take their recipients to doctor's appointments. I feel like this is really something that, that's overlooked when it comes to how much these home care providers are getting paid compared to other counties in California. We have 22,000 workers across California, Del Norte County's workers are the least paid for such a big service that they do. I wanted to let everyone know that we'll be emailing you some propositions that didn't come in, take a look at them, and I think that's just about everything I need to say.
Okay, next person?
My name is David Alvarez, I'm also a provider. Such an important program. If I didn't have this program, I, yeah, my mother would be shipped off. I just wanted to say, hopefully, you know, it just goes on because without it, I don't think I would have a mom, you know? But I just want to just add that and thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Joseph Fernandez, I am also in District 2 and I am also a home care worker. I've been a home care worker for the past 14 years and before, I was an executive housekeeper, working for both house care, or housekeeping and home care. You learn about the level of respect. When I was in housekeeping, I learned that we were looked as if we were in the bottom of the barrel, entry like it. We got minimum wage while others' departments were making good money. Home care workers have a lot in common with housekeeping. We also get looked at as if we are also in the bottom of a barrel and the level of respect is about the same. We're making low wage while other programs are doing the same type of work, cruising by and making good money. One thing I learned about housekeeping and home care workers is we are the key to getting the day started. It's time to acknowledge the home care workers for who they really are and be given a much deserved raise for the hard work that they do. I support the home care workers, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
My name is Tara Anna Mashawn and I'm in District 3. My child is a nine-year-old non-verbal autistic and if it wasn't for the IHSS program, I am a single parent, excuse me, I'm nervous. If it wasn't for the IHSS program because I am a single parent, my child would probably be institutionalized, so it's a very, very big help for me.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Good morning. My name is Sarah Demuth and I'm a First Five Service Corps Vista with First Five. And I would like to share with you guys today our newly updated and renovated resource guide. It's meant for community members and families. It's been a very long and tedious project, but we're finally done, well, we're not quite done yet, but we are handing it out to our community members and our community partners. And I wanted to thank County IT for being so patient and willing to work with us, especially Dan McCorkle and Sylvia Ortega. And we are going to be having the resource guide put onto a disc format so that our community partners can put it on their website and we're hoping to have it up on the county website within the next couple of weeks and I'd like to hand them out to you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Since I already have one, you want to give it to them? And I read it too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public comment.
Can I ask Sarah a question? Sarah, where these, can the public pick these up? Because it is a fantastic resource guide, likes of what we haven't had in a long time.
Thank you for the reminder. People can call the Family Resource Center at 464-5500 and ask for Sarah D. Or you can feel free to stop in at the Family Resource Center.
Are these going to be in the community?
Yes, we're trying to hand them out, we're trying to get as many printed as our budget will allow, we're trying to hand them out to the community and along with giving the discs to our partners, then they're able to print them off for themselves to keep as well.
Okay.
So, we're trying to get them distributed as best we can.
Even to the library perhaps, when there's?
Yeah, we're working with our community partners and we're getting them distributed as fast as we can get them printed off.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, seeing no public comments, any additional public comment, I'm going to go ahead and close that. We, at this point, we'll take up the item 15, review and take possible action regarding the request for a fee waiver by Del Norte Habitat for Humanity. We have a speaker from the group. Morning.
I'm Carol Matthews, co-president of the Board for Del Norte Habitat for Humanity and I would like to introduce the other members of our board who could be here this morning. We have Ruth York, our co-president, Barbara Ringold, Katie Boyven, Roger White, Pastor Scott Ratzloff, and Renee Radnicki. I want to thank all of them for coming. When Del Norte Habitat was ready to construct our third home, the Board of Supervisors generously waived the building permit and encroachment fees in support of low-income housing. Now, the plans have been approved and Habitat is ready to begin construction of our fourth home with our new partner family, a three-generation family of nine. We're requesting that you again waive the building and permit and encroachment fees, which I believe totaled $2,781.31. Since finishing our third home, Habitat has completed eight accessible ramp projects through our MOU with the County Minor Home Repair Program, representing about 1,600 volunteer hours. This has been a very successful effort for the county, Habitat, and especially those benefiting from the ramps at their homes. Del Norte Habitat has three partner families living in and purchasing their homes from us and paying a total of $4,700 a year in property taxes. Home ownership benefits them, their neighborhoods, and community and their taxes help support our community. Looking forward, Habitat would like to invite you supervisors and everyone to the groundbreaking ceremony for this next home at 310 North Bradford Street in Smith River on this Sunday, March 18th, 3:00 p.m. Thank you.
Any other members? Yeah, Roger.
I'm Roger White, architect, project manager for Del Norte Habitat for Humanity. I wanted to let you know that this house is one of the first in the area to meet the new green standards that provide, that we're under for the state requirements now. And also, it'll be the first home in the area that I'm aware of that it's going to be sprinkled as part of the new fire marshal requirements. This house is larger than we normally do, but the, but the family is quite large, also nine people in the family on this one. We also would again like to invite you to the groundbreaking, you'll be able to see the plans and be able to see what the house will look like. Thank you.
Thanks Roger. Any other public comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
You know, this is a, hate using acronym of the win-win type thing, but this really is one. This is a, we've been promoting partnerships, safe and healthy neighborhoods, communities, and this is it to where it's, we're not gifting anything because that's against the board's policies. But what we did is enter into an agreement with Habitat to where you also provide numerous hours to work on projects that are funded through our low income or to benefit our low-income housing. It just, it's a great, great partnership and everybody truly wins, the county, Habitat, and the constituents, so, good job. Thank you for, thank you for being a partner.
Any other board comments?
I agree with David that the work is incredible and it's an opportunity that years ago when people started talking that we were going to have Habitat, kind of scratched my head and I thought, I hope this isn't just another dream that people have, but it actually has turned into now four houses, which is an incredible move forward and I appreciate your hard work. And with that, I would make the motion that we waive the, that we waive the encroachment, the building permit and encroachment fees for this project.
I would second that.
I kind of have a question. I was not aware that we have ever waived permitting and encroachment fees.
With staffs?
Well, it's primarily because it's a partnership, that it's not a waiving of, of the permit, it's an exchange in getting the ramps. Yeah, it's a quid pro quo.
There's an MOU that's currently in place, the provisions of which the county would provide a scope of work and allowable costs associated with the project. Those are associated with the housing program and in turn, Habitat provides labor. So, in the sense of the partnership, that would be the trade-off, would be in kind of labor for any of the scope of work and allowable costs associated.
So, maybe we need to rephrase the motion a little bit to reflect that?
I, I think the motion's correct.
Okay. Well, I can tell you personally, sitting on the board prior, it's for a great cause. So, and, and the folks that do buy this, that are selected based on income needs and where they're at, they have to pay the loan back. So, it's, it's not, they're not getting a free house. They actually put their own blood, sweat, and tears into the house and they are paying the loan back over, over time and so, it's, it's definitely for good cause.
Well, and I think that the case that needs to, the point that needs to be made here is we are not giving any or waiving any money or gifting any. is we are not giving any or waiving any money or gifting any money to anybody, even to Habitat. We are getting in return for waiving those fees, labor towards projects through our low-income housing program, so...
Typically through the minor home repair project, Habitat has provided numerous handicap-accessible ramps and that's the typical labor that we've seen on the other side of this. It's through that MOU and that program.
Okay. Jeremy, can you pull it up, please?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Moving on to item twelve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item twelve, presentation by the UC Cooperative Extension to introduce the new Healthy Families and Communities Advisor.
You got free cookies going on out there?
Yes, so we got wrestling things going on out there.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Dorina Espinoza. I am the new Youth Families and Communities Advisors with the University of California Cooperative Extension, serving Delnort, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. In my role, I serve as the advisor for the 4H Youth Development Program as well as working to advance the initiatives of the UC Cooperative Extension in Healthy Families and Communities. And those initiatives include reduction in childhood obesity prevention, youth development, and improving youth science literacy. To this position, I bring extensive experience in the education field, working from preschool years, youth, adult, excuse me, youth, to university students and adults. I have a PhD in kinesiology and I have been working in public health in Humboldt County prior to this position with Co-op Extension. In the combination of my experience in physical activity and nutrition education, I bring to the rural communities an extensive experience in working and addressing needs in rural communities that, as you know, includes issues around access to services, issues around distance, and issues around transportation needs, as well as unique issues around the state of health and wellness of community members. First, I'd like to thank the members of the board for your continued support of the 4H program here in Delnort County through paid staff and office support. As well, thank you for your support of the Co-op Extension work in agricultural and natural resources. I'm here today and pleased to share with you that there is one full-time nutrition education position that is currently being created to serve both Delnort and Humboldt Counties. The primary role of that position will be to implement the FNEP program, which is the Expanded Food Nutrition Education Program. I have been in contact with Delnort County Public Health Branch and plan to contact the Building Health Communities team such that our combined efforts to improve the health of Delnort community members addresses the needs of the community as well as work towards creating effective and efficient means and leveraging our resources. I'm also here to share with you that our plant science advisor, Deborah Giraud, has secured funding for the federally recognized tribes' extension program known as FERTUP. The program supports extension agents on American Indian reservations and tribal jurisdictions to address the unique needs and problems of American Indian tribal nations. Emphasis is placed on assisting American Indians in the development of profitable farming and ranching techniques, as well as providing 4H youth development experiences for tribal youth, and providing education and outreach on tribally identified priorities. I'd like to now introduce you to my coworker, Sandy Southrum, who is the 4H program representative for Delnort and Humboldt Counties.
Thank you, Dorina, and welcome. It's nice to get to meet you. I have been in this position since July 1st. I've served as the program representative for 4H in Humboldt County since 2002 and my background comes to you in education. I have early childhood credentials and elementary school credentials, plus experience in 4H as both a member, as a youth, and as a 4H volunteer. I'm excited to get to know the people in Delnort County that are working in the 4H program. I have met with the county council and with Jackie Bennett in the office here and working together as a team to identify goals and direction for the future, as well as celebrate the successes that they have, the clubs that already exist. There's a new club that just went forward with a charter, which is the Elk Valley Swine Club, that will be expanding 4H in Delnort County. They are also looking for ways to recruit new volunteers and leaders and many of the projects that currently exist, as well as new projects in areas. As Dorina alluded, we have science literacy and obesity prevention as part of Healthy Families and Communities, as well as youth development and life skills, so we are looking for ways to expand some of those areas as well. And that includes outreach to the schools and to the after-school programs. So, I'm delighted to, to be able to say that in Klamath, the Cracker Prep School, Charter School, is doing a career development and exploration and has been this whole year as part of the FERTUP grant. And they are currently on a college tour down to Santa Cruz, UC Berkeley, to UC Davis, and other colleges this week. So, it'll be exciting to see the classroom education they've been doing every week in the class now being put down to actually touring college campuses and see what the youth view is when they come back from that experience. We also have done what's called Thrive Training this year. It's a new emphasis in leadership development put out by the State of California 4H program. And we had four people from Delnort County get trained in this. Two of them are going to work in the traditional program, doing leadership development skills with junior and teen leaders, and then next year it'll go on to additional skills and support for volunteer leaders. We also had two people from the Shores Academy come to the Thrive Training and they are looking at ways to expand 4H skills and knowledge and education through their, their school in the in-school program. So, 4H Traditional Delivery, as well known throughout the state, is always having a club and project-based program, but after-school 4H camp and in-school science support have become very strong components throughout the state and they are being received well by the 4H community here within Delnort County. So, we're excited to continue to help support youth in these wonderful life skills that they have. And then Dorina and I are welcome for any questions that you might have for 4H or the Cooperative Extension program, either now or in the future, and if we don't know the answers, we'll be happy to work towards that to bring those back to you.
Any questions for board members?
How many members are there in Delnort County?
Currently, there's about 185 members this year and we are working to increase that number. They have been more like 250 in the past few years and as you know, when transitions happen in leadership, sometimes it's hard to keep things going in the same manner. So, we're looking forward to boosting those numbers and trying to reach as many youth within Delnort County as possible.
Thanks for your efforts. It's a great program.
Thank you.
So, are you both stationed up here or one of you stationed in Delnort County?
Currently, we are both in the Eureka Office, so we work back and forth between the two offices, driving up this morning. We're thankful that the weather changed from what it was during the night to what it was this morning, but we did find the Drury Parkway was closed, so we're guessing there might be some trees that fell down in Prairie Creek State Park. But, yeah, it's a beautiful drive. Try to maximize our time by doing a lot of things, by emails and phone calls and connecting. We're glad they're, Adobe Connect is within the university, which is similar to a Skype program to have online meetings, so we try to do a lot of connecting in that way as well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your support.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
With the FNEP position, there will be shared time between Humboldt and Delnort Counties and that individual will be most likely serving two days a week here in Delnort County and three days a week in Humboldt County. So, it will be a position that is shared between the two with access to the, with a presence, excuse me, presence in the community, so...
Okay, thank you. Good to know. Okay, at this point, we are going to go to item eleven, timed item, presentation by Bill Renfro, Director of Tri-Agency Development Authority regarding the 2011 Economic Development Accomplishments and the 2011/12 Midyear Project. Bill.
Good morning. Just going to take a moment to set up, Mr. Chair, board members. Thank you for letting me share with you this morning. For the benefit of those in the audience that don't know, the Tri-Agency is actually an entity, a joint powers authority that represents the economic development interests of the city, the county, and the Harbor District. Those three entities fund Tri-Agency and so what I would like to do is tell you some of the things we accomplished last year. Have we got that fired up? Oh, there it is. I'll clean this filter later here and guess I'm supposed to clean the filter. So, basically, the lead story for last year, of course, for everybody, was the tsunami. That was a very devastating event in the community, however, trying to look for the silver lining, it did bring approximately $30 to $40 million worth of potential funds into the community and when we're finished, we will have the most updated and modern harbor in Northern California. I did work with Harbor on trying to find funding assistance there, as well as contacting the nongovernmental agencies for assistance for displaced persons and Fisher people in the community. The other big story, there's actually a third one I'll get to later, but the other big story here is that we finalized and got approved by the U.S. Economic Development Administration, the SEDS document. That's an acronym, acronym for the Community Economic Development Strategy. This is a document put together by a large group of people. There are 30 people involved in, in this, a cross-section of business, private sector, nonprofits, and tribes that all provided input and this is our sort of map to the future on where the community wants to go in the next five years. By having this document approved by U.S. EDA, it allows many other entities in the county to go forward and look for federal funding. So, that's a big milestone to, to actually get the SEDS updated and approved. Every year, we seem to be receiving more and more interest in the community. When I first got here in 2009, we only had nine inquiries that went to 10. In 2010 and last year, we had 22 inquiries from different organizations, companies, manufacturers, and that sort of thing, looking to move into the community. Sometimes, they have issues that we can't really mitigate. For example, if they're looking for rail, we don't have rail. If they're looking for natural gas, we don't really have natural gas. Otherwise, a couple of times, we've come real close into recruiting them in there, but the higher visibility is a direct result of the improvements in our infrastructure in the community. So, as we move forward with completing the HAS199.com projects, which is an acronym for Harbor Airport Sewer Highway 199 and the broadband internet or .com, as those continue to move forward and get completed, we will see more and more interest in our community for people to come here and start businesses and provide careers for our young people. Regarding the Harbor Airport Sewer 199.com, the Harbor, as I mentioned, is looking at, at receiving a lot of funding. However, whenever they say they have this funding and it's applicable to the airport too, there's always a catch and that catch is finding the matching funds. Sometimes, the matches are relatively nominal, like 5%, sometimes they can be up to 50% depending on the agency. So, I spend a lot of time helping the entities find matching funds out there. As far as the sewer goes, last year was a big year. Of course, we finished the plant. It's online. It's now probably the most advanced wastewater treatment plant on the Northern California coast. We connected the seafood processor into the plant and that, to the Harbors, great relief, took them out of the wastewater treatment business. And since then, we've started discussions with county and the city on where we might provide sewers next. There are many areas immediately around the metro area here that are still unseptic and so the issue would be where can we put a sewer that'll help not only relieve a public health issue, but also provide for economic development. Highway 199 is pretty much the purview of Ms. Tamara Layton, the Executive Director for the Transportation Commission, but she has been pushing that forward for years. The little sign on the right-hand side is the STAA truck sign that's up by the, the state line that says no STAA trucks can come into our county. We're, we're working to try to end that so that we'll take that sign down and we can get those trucks into the community. If you've been up 199 in the last six months or so, you've seen some improvements. There are a lot of other improvements that are going on, on that highway. The most noticeable one is the rockfall protection just past Patrick Creek, so it is, all those improvements are happening. And then last but not least, and this is probably the third big bullet as far as I'm concerned for accomplishments in 2011, we had a contractor working for Tri-Agency, a gentleman named John Irwin, who was also very influential in the Oregon Health Network. He was able to put together a coalition of the entities that you see there, as well as some other folks, and convince the Oregon Health Network that our Sutter Coast Hospital is really an Oregon hospital, even though we're just a little bit over the line. And by making a compelling argument that we should be brought into that network, he was able to secure a, a large chunk of the funding needed to complete our redundant internet connection backup to the broadband backbone on I-5. That has pretty much been constructed now. We're up to Gasky with broadband and last summer, they constructed from Grants Pass down past O'Brien. We have the, what we refer to as the Gasky Gap. It's about a 32-mile segment primarily in the Six Rivers National Forest and Siskiyou National Forest, but working with our congressional partners in both California and Oregon, we were able to get all the permits needed for that and that's going into construction as soon as the weather permits up in the, in the mountains with a target completion date of July. What's very important about that is once we have that redundant loop, our internet will stay up and not go down, not like earlier today, perhaps. And what that does is afford us an opportunity to market the community here as a, a great place for software firms and internet companies. They can come up here, have this robust, high-speed, high-capacity internet, have this wonderful quality of life, affordable housing, all those things, and get them out of the Bay Area or out of the Portland or Seattle area and encourage them to come here. So, with the completion of this in July, we will certainly be able to better market our community. Couple of other things, the, the former Surfside Brewery, Tri-Agency had a real property interest in that. We now have a tenant in there. They will eventually have up to 20 new employees, as well as a fresh seafood market that's hopefully going to open later this month. As Bistro Gardens, we did a little different thing there where we liquidated everything in the old Surfside Brewery. At the Bistro, we have kept everything intact and what we're planning to do there is market a turnkey restaurant with this incredible view of South Beach and that's moving along fairly well. We've had, we had a great deal of interest initially and we've kind of got it down to a, a couple of finalists, so we're hoping to have a new restaurant in there before tourist season. As I mentioned, oops, going the wrong way. Here we go. Public outreach, I was asked to give a presentation to the California Association of Local Economic Developers on the economic impacts of the tsunami. It was quite interesting that there are many, many people in the state that really did not appreciate the impact that it had in our community. Probably other big thing there would be the Today in America publication. They came into town. I helped coordinate with the county administrative officer, Mr. Serena, and the city manager, Mr. Plaza, and we actually set up interviews and shoot locations and all that. It's in post-production now and we're hoping to see that air later this month. We should get a proof back. We want to make sure that they say Delnort. Those sorts of little details before it airs across the country. Regionally, I've been working with Curry County. They also are looking at some economic issues up there and so what they're, we're trying to do is combine our marketing efforts. In the real world, if you look at like Google Earth, if somebody comes over to this part of the world, you know, we, we want to share those tourism dollars and, and visitors... of the world, you know, we want to share those tourism dollars and visitors between the two states. So actually, last week, I just had a very good meeting with one of the county commissioners there and a consultant on how we can better, do a better job of that this summer and attract people over here and show them that there's lots of things to do and they need to stay a couple of days. We last year established a film commissioner. It's the first time, I think, ever for the county, Cassandra Heseltine. She actually approached Tri-Agency as the first step to doing that. It was subsequently funded by the Visitor Bureau, and that's been very successful. There's a big shoot that's actually happening very soon up at Patrick Creek. I think they're going to be up there for several weeks. So that brings money into the community. Tri-Agency applied for and received a Resource Advisory Committee Woody Biomass Utilization Grant, and this is basically to look at, can we do something with all the woody biomass up in the forest besides pile it up and burn it every year? And what we're looking at is, can we perhaps use it to make ethanol, which would be a fuel additive, and maybe lower the fuel costs in our community? And then last but not least, we moved the financial agent for Tri-Agency from Humboldt Area Foundation, and we brought that task up here and, under contract with Del Norte Economic Development Corporation, now have them do our fiscal accounting. That prevents a sort of flow of money down to Humboldt County and keeps it in Del Norte County. The next ten items or so are basically from the 2011-2012 action plan that Tri-Agency has, and that Supervisor Finnegan mentioned that we're going to have a 2012-2013 strategy session on, so what do we want to push for in the next fiscal year? And that's pretty much it, unless you have questions.
Any questions for board members?
No, good job. Thanks for the presentation, because a lot of people don't know what the heck we do or don't know we do anything.
Thank you.
A lot of good stuff going on.
I want to say thank you too, because again, I was sitting here, David and I, when we first started talking about the broadband and the redundancy issue. And it seemed so far away that it was this giant hill, and we've reached the top and we're on our way.
It's taken a lot of commitment from the supervisors over these years to get us here, and it'll be very exciting when it's all done this summer.
Excellent. Any public comment at all on that? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close that. Thanks, Bill. Okay, at this point, let's take item sixteen, since we're a little bit short of the CDBG meeting or hearing, except the attached application of the Borrow Boys Ranch for Title III funding in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and direct to clerk of the board to publish a description of the proposed project in the local newspaper and to forward the proposed project to the Forest Service representative of the Resource Advisor Committee for the review as requested by the Director of Community Development. It's a mouthful.
Hi, this is the Title III Project Fund for Borrow Boys Ranch. We've done these in the past. This is a continuation of those. This would be for fifteen thousand dollars to clear hazard fuels in and around the camp, and it does qualify under the old monies as a community work camp. And so we bring that for you to begin this process, to notify the RAC, and to bring it back to you later for approval.
Thank you for proof.
Second?
Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, moving back to timed items. Conduct a public hearing to discuss this admission of the 2012 Community Development Block Grant application, and approve and adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors Approving an Application for Funding on the 2012 State Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, and Authorizing the Execution of a Grant Agreement and Any Amendments thereto with the State of California and the Purposes of this Grant as requested by the County Administrative Officer." So we're about to opening the CDBG public hearing. If you wish to speak at this hearing, please step up to the front table, use the sheet. Are you going to do that part?
There's, no.
Provided to sign your name and address for the record. When the hearing's open, you will have five minutes, excuse me, three minutes to speak, and we would appreciate you using the microphone so that we can all hear your testimony. So, Jim.
Just a great introduction here. Thank you. Good morning. We are here to conduct a public hearing to get citizen input on our proposed 2012 CDBG or Community Development Block Grant application. At the end of the public hearing, I would ask the Board of Supervisors to approve a resolution specifically on this one to include the activities and the dollar amounts that we would be asking for in the, I think in the board report, I've, I tried to outline some of the major changes that they made in the program this year, and they've been huge. This is completely different than what we've done in past years. I won't go into those unless there's questions, but there have been major changes. I think also included in the board packet was a little chart that looked like this. This pretty much summarizes, and I think if you look at it and study it, summary, you know, it did a good job of summarizing what our limitations are going to be per activity and what we can apply for, how much we can apply for, and how many different services within our programs and projects that we can apply for within each one of these general The whole purpose, I guess, just in summary, the Housing and Community Development Department was under the gun to reduce their cost. And in the past, they, they put out a notice of funding availability for economic development. They put another one out for our general allocation. They put another one out for planning and technical assistance. And each one of those then, you know, applications were submitted, they were scored, awards were made, and contracts were made to the local governments for each one of these. And they had hundreds and hundreds of contracts for all these different activities. In their efforts to reduce these, they have combined everything, and this is going to reduce their, they feel they, it's going to reduce the number of contracts that they have to manage down to a reasonable number in the hundreds, one hundreds instead of three or four hundred. So this is, this is why it's all transpired. But because it is all new, and it's very confusing, we, I attended a one-day session, workshop, to go over these changes, and it's, it's still confusing. We're getting more and more information every day when we ask questions that we didn't know before, so. But what, how we got to where we are right now, today, is that back on February third, we held a joint public hearing. This wasn't before the governing boards. It didn't have to be before the governing boards. But there was a joint city-county public hearing where we sat down with people from the local community who were interested in, in community development block grant funding. And we talked about all of these changes. We also asked those outside groups, private nonprofits for the most part, to, if they were interested in receiving grant funding, that they submit proposals to us by February We received a total of ten proposals in public service totaling one point seven one million dollars. Between the city and the county, we have a total of one million dollars in, that we can request funding. Five hundred thousand dollars for the city, five hundred thousand dollars from the county. The city and county staff met, and we looked at all of the proposals. We tried to see where the community could get the biggest bang for its buck, and by moving these projects around, whether we included, as a little side note, we have not only public service, but we have this other category called set aside that's non-competitive, but it also counts, so we can put more in down there and get a few more dollars. The only other thing that I would say, and as you'll see in the board report, the dollars that I have put in there were allowed seven and a half percent general administration and to, what I've done is just taken seven and a half percent of each one of the requested funding amounts and moved it out of that activity and into general administration. The administration does not have to come out of the activities equally. So this is, you know, something if you choose to move that or allocate it some other way, that can be done also. So, is there any immediate questions on what we've?
The immediate question is, is, am I right in understanding there's no more TIG, no more Targeted Income Group?
Oh, yeah, there, yeah. They, it's called low-mod income. They don't call it TIG anymore. They changed the names of everything.
Well, with the change in name, is it a little more generous, genuous?
Uh.
Generous?
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 No, it's not. In some way, it's more.
But the ratio's the same?
No, it's, where we used to have projects that were served a limited clientele, and we could do that and say, you know, we'd get extra points because we're assured that a hundred percent of our clientele that we're serving were low-mod income households or persons. Now they've gone back to, for us, the low-mod rate percentage for the county and the poverty rate for the county. Del Norte County is still okay. You know, we're one of the worst, the way I look at it, we have a better rate because it's higher, but, you know, it's okay from the standpoint of the counties, but when you're compared to the cities, the cities have a little bit of an advantage, because their, their low-mod percentage and their poverty percentages are generally higher than what the counties are. So it's kind of skewed, I think, my personal opinion, skewed towards the cities more than it is to the counties.
We're not in competition with the city's proposal?
Yes, we are in competition with the cities. Everybody submits their application. Whoever, for example, each one of these general activities, for example, housing, economic development, public service, every entity that submits an application for public service, they will be in competition with each other.
Yeah, well, what happened to, in the past, the city and the county used to get together through our grants goal committee, and would talk about the needs of the community and work together towards putting together a singular application. In fact, one year, for the Wellness Center, we combined two years' worth of funding to do something there.
Well, they're not, the only time I remember that we've ever done a joint application, and that was, that was a complete failure. It was a planning and technical assistance thing, and we have, we have cooperatively tried to maximize our, you know, what we can get. And yes, we went into, we, the city graciously accepted all of the public service for one year while we did the clinic for two years. And conversely, I think they did the same thing, the county took on all the public service when they were building Harrington, while the city was building Harrington House. So.
I think, but I think with Jim's, a few years ago, what happened is, all the groups got together, and the city said, "We'll take these guys, and the county will take these." And then the following year, city lapsed on their application. And so a bunch of people did not get funding that year.
Right, that, that's true.
And now they're back eligible.
We're back, we're in that mode. I mean, we've done that. We took those ten proposals and, you know, sat down with the city cooperatively, looked at.
Well, because of the baggage in the past, and then, of course, the cooperation in the way past, you know, people that look at this on TV are going to, when you say it's competitive, it's not an either-or between the city or the county.
No, no, it's not.
To both of them can get funded.
No, it's not, you know, but we're all competing for the same dollar.
Statewide.
Right, statewide, yeah.
Yeah.
So Jim, are we supposed to pick one of these plans out of this? Are you leaving this resolution? Is this resolution to be left like this, or we're picking one?
No, what I need, and that's why I said, this is, this is different, again, than what we've done in the past. There is, you know, a couple of options here that we're limited to three major activities. And, you know, including that set aside now is considered one activity. So right now, if we did everything that we wanted to do, we'd have four, and we can't do that. We have to eliminate one of those.
And is there a question on, on one of, are we able to ask for more money if we have one project versus the other?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because of the limits within the categories.
So there's basically different silos, basically, and we can only get so much money out of each silo.
Right, to a, to a grand total maximum of two million dollars.
I would move that we take the or on this resolution. Which is the second?
The second option. We're going to have enough.
Yeah, we've got to have a public.
Why don't we?
I still have a couple of questions.
Sure, sure.
On the, on the multifamily rehabilitation application, which is Redwood Cove.
Yes.
Which serves how many seniors, do you know? How many?
Thirty.
That serves thirty-nine seniors. And that is for a vital need for the elevator.
Yes.
And, and I'm concerned that, that looking at the decrease in the application funding in the or part of the application, that that would limit the ability to complete the project. I'm also looking at the senior nutrition program, and knowing that the senior nutrition program, based on how the, the funding is happening, there's going to be a gap. And the gap could actually, with the reduction, the gap could actually harm the program. So I would advocate that that not be reduced. I would also advocate that the adult literacy program stay alive, because working in the community, I know that one of our number-one issues in our community is that if people can improve their ability to read and their ability to do math and that kind of thing, their employability increases dramatically, so the quality of our life increases dramatically. I appreciate the road department's request, but I'm also concerned that, looking at this, understanding the new limitations on this program, that if you have a public improvement program that doesn't finish within the period of time, we can't reapply next time. And I think I would advocate that if we took the public service, the housing, and the set aside, we will be able to roll through that, those dollars at a fast enough pace, that when it comes time for us to apply again, we will be able to have, to apply. But right now, if we took on a, such a huge public improvement project, we may risk the ability to reapply.
May I clarify?
Does it, does the project not go forward on, on the multifamily rental rehab with three fifty-six versus three eighty-five? Does it stop the project?
I would be, I would be worried that it would fall short, and there's no, there's no backup plan.
Could I clarify on the, just for purposes of the overall report, the Fred Hay Drive Improvement Project was put in there as the, the only public improvement, because it is the only shovel-ready project. It wasn't a request to the road department. That, we, we made that as an option, only because it is one of those types of services that could be placed in there. But it was the only shovel-ready project for the county. So just to clarify, the road department didn't come to us on that. We went to them.
I'd say, you know, what you've mentioned also is the ability to apply for future funding from CDG. They, next year, they will be implementing what they call the fifty-percent rule. And what that means is, is until we spend fifty percent of the funding that we're awarded, whatever that amount is, we will be ineligible to apply for any additional funding. The timing and the way they've put this together almost guaranteed we will not be eligible for any, to submit an application in 2013. I, I would almost guarantee that it would be impossible to do that. I mean, you'd have to spend.
Is that under both options?
On both options, yeah. But if, if you just, because the applications are due April sixth, they said they are going to make awards in July or August. make awards in July or August, they said they would get contracts out by September or October. If, even if they do all of that, by April 6th of the following year, we would have to have spent 50% of the, of the funding. And even if you're shovel-ready, I don't think you can go, you know, you're, you're going through the winter time, you're not gonna be doing it until, you know, the road project, for example, you're not gonna be doing it until the following, the summer of 2013.
Yeah, I understand that for the, for the road project in Fred Haight Drive, but I don't understand why we couldn't spend the money within the next six months. Obviously, with the court advocacy services and the senior nutrition, you can spend it right away. Really, the senior housing and the senior multifamily housing, why can't that be ready by springtime?
Those could possibly be, you know, but again, it's gonna be...
I mean, I really do think under option one, we could spend more than 50%, probably all the money by next April.
None of the, none of the public service ones, those have to be spread, that has to be funding for...
The whole year.
We're calculating...
Well, I see what you're saying, yes. Well, even if you prorated it, you're still gonna be spending 70% of it, 80% of it, on the public services.
Maybe we can hear from Roseanne.
There's a chance anyway, is what I'm getting at.
Um, I, I'm curious if you put these, if you brought, you, you changed the values on, on some of these same projects in the or portion, is there a chance that the projects would not be completely funded? That you would put the money out there and, and...
Well, you know, and, and we, I just was told this morning, we got a, we had a independent third party, one of those neat things that we do with Habitat for Humanity, and Roger White did it, an evaluation on the, the Redwood Cove, and he came back, even though they have an estimate, it's a little bit old, and he came back and he said, he didn't think they could be able to do it for under 400, possibly even $450,000. If that's the case, and I think, you know, we need, it's one of those things where you really have to go out for bid before you know. We do have some, some leeway there that if we get that award and if the bids came in higher, we could request that we shift some money from housing rehab over to multifamily. It's all housing money, and I think, you know, it would be a two-way street if for some reason they came in something less than that, that we could say, "Oh, we don't wanna lose this money, uh, we're gonna move it over to the other way." So, there is a little bit of flexibility, but again, Supervisor McClure, the answer to your question about reducing those, as I, I stated, those are based on a flat seven-and-a-half percent reduction and, and just because as a starting point, and if, if the board chooses to, we do not have to do them all equally. If the board chooses to put more in one, on one project or, or such than any another, then they can't. I think as far as the public service goes, um, the public service, you know, they're gonna, they can just, they can do so much with the dollars that they, they get. The Redwood Cove, I think we've got a little bit of flexibility there, and as the road project, the Fred Haight project, if whatever comes up for Fred Haight, the balance of that, the project itself is a little over $1 million, so, you know, the road department will have to come up with the balance of that project, you know? We can't, we can't fund that whole project.
Jeff, you wanna speak on the Fred Haight project?
Please.
Yeah, we're gonna, but I wanted to get one more staff input before we go to public, public comment. Come on up.
No, you can't take the money out of the clam of slides.
Oh, okay. Um, I was just asking Rosanna where the dollar amounts came from, so they're back a few years, but regardless, this would be a good project. We've identified this road is, I mean, if you've driven down that road, you obviously know it needs some help, so if we have to spend a little bit of money to, to get a brand-new road out of it, I think that's good. I think that would be great for the community of Smith River and the people that use that, that road, so a little leery on the dollar amount, timeframe of, or where that dollar amount came from, but...
What about going to construction? At what point, is it possible to go this year or not?
Um, that's a good question. That's a good question, so...
No, it's a great question.
Is it gonna go to bid?
Fifty-six thousand dollar question.
Yeah, fifty thousand, yeah, you're right.
Well, it has to go through Davis Bacon, so, yeah.
Is that something that can be done within, within the road department?
Mm-hmm.
Not this summer. We have too many projects going on.
What, what's the, um, usage, the daily average on Fred Haight of cars?
I can't answer that.
But this project has been a priority for a number of years.
It has been a priority for a number of years, and it's been put on the back burner for whatever reason, but, but it is an issue, and it's not just that the road is an issue, the, the drainage is an issue, and that is more so what we've addressed, um, where do you put the water, so, and, and the shovel-ready project, we know where to put the water.
Yeah.
So...
And what's your concern about the, you think the cost is gonna be much higher?
I don't know who came up with these numbers, and I haven't talked with them, so I'm just kinda, that's what I'm leery about. If it was, if it was figured by staff doing it or if it was figured by contractor going to bid?
Do we have somebody from, do we have somebody from CDD that has an answer to the questions on how we came up with those numbers on?
I'll, I'll clarify to you. I, I came up with that number through Tina. That was the number that was given through the estimate previously, so I had spoken to Tina about any projects that might be shovel-ready in there. You know, again, and this is, I don't know if Jeff prepared on this one because what we were talking about was an option for the board to either maximize the money on one end of it, which would require a, a contribution by the county, as opposed to coming in and leaving out an infrastructure project that might be a priority project to the board. So, you know, in looking at it, calling to find out some specifics, the 1.1 million is what came from the previous estimate.
And that estimate's how old?
Couple of years, I believe, three, three, four years?
Two, three or four years.
And, you know, the problem with this project is it needs to be done, and we have not been able to find any other funding.
It, it needs to be done, and there hasn't been any funding sources for that, to my knowledge, and I, and I've spoke with Tina, and so we're, we're kinda stuck in the middle. We've, we've gone to other road projects and done them, and this one's always been thrown back, and it actually should be thrown in the forefront of, of any construction project.
Well, we already voted on the board as a number-one project in the county, as Fred Haight, got moved up as a roads project, so it's not a question of priority.
Number one in roads, but it's not, this, we're, that's part of the, you know, the equation here, though.
As if it can get done.
All right. Rosanna?
Because then you're looking at a two-year allocation, not a one-year allocation, which then throws the ratios completely out the window, and then you can't fund people that need funding out of public services or housing next year.
The Fred Haight project is an old RSTP or STIP project where the funding was pulled by Caltrans for other projects, and so this is the same situation as Pebble Beach Drive was for us. It's a high priority for the local transportation commission and all our planning and everything.
Okay.
I'd like to clarify one, one more thing here again, is, is the timing issue on this. This is that, you know, you're talking about the summer, and I don't think the projects are gonna be, I mean, we won't have grant funds until September or October. The awards are, the award will be announced in July or August, but our contract, unless, unless the board chooses to incur cost at, at the county's risk, before we get a contract, I don't, those contracts probably will not be available until September or October. So, any of the, the road work, unless they say they can do something in the winter time, probably won't be done until 2013.
So, either one of these scenarios, we're not gonna get funding for the following year.
I, you know, my opinion is, is I don't think that we will be able to spend the money in the timeframe that we have unless the, the board chooses to move forward, which I know that, I've been reluctant to even ask, but I know you have made some exceptions in the past, but I haven't, I haven't asked too frequently to, to do that because I know the board doesn't like doing that.
So, if the funding is based on a fiscal year, when you get the awards of the grants in August and then you sign the contracts, when will CDBG start counting that you are eligible to spend the money? Can you, if you chose to take the risk, count it all the way back to June 30th, July 1st?
No.
You can, you can't start counting it until October, whenever you sign it, and the next eligibility is gonna be April?
April, yes. So, you're talking about, you know, just that period, October, November, December, January, February, March, uh, you know, you're talking less than six months of actual work time to get things done, to spend 50% of your total award. I mean, they, they really have, they've really tightened this up. I, it was by design, they admit it, you know, HCD admits that this was by design. They do not want people applying for grant funds every year.
So, going into that mode of thinking, what's gonna happen? What would be the strategy then, if you will, for, for example, the public services and the housing or even the set asides, knowing that this application, even though we're looking at it on a one-year funding, really is a two-year funding?
It is two-year, we, no, we've asked the people to submit their proposals and request the amount of funding it would take them to survive for two years.
Okay.
So, they, they are being funded for a two-year period.
Okay.
So, Jim, another clarification? Yeah, clarification. What, what's the deadline in terms of submitting these?
Uh, the application has to be at Sacramento by 5:00 PM on April 6th.
So, these grant awards will cover a two-year period?
Yes.
So, I, I guess one of the things that I don't have answered in, in the packet is the number of people served, um, which would be, I mean, impossible to, so the process, are we, are we gonna vote on this at the next meeting as well? What we're assuming today is this is it.
I'd like this to be it. If, um, so I have to, I have to put the whole thing together by the...
Would you have enough time to do it if it kept continuing?
We could, we could, um, I, you know, I guess that the board, I'd like to have the public, I mean, we have to have the public hearing today. If the board chooses to not, uh, to, to not finalize the resolution, I would come back at the meeting on the 27th to finalize the resolution, um, but I would like specific direction from the board to, you know, either to come up with some real good answers for the meeting on the 27th, you know, to questions that you might have.
Well, I just think that we need, since it is gonna be a two-year program, we need to maximize the amount of money we're, are asked. It, it, I mean, it just, it's, to me, it just seems like, I mean, we've got a project that, that needs to get done that hasn't been funded for 10-plus years, um, here's an opportunity to do it, and we're gonna have two years to do it. It looks to me like, uh, it's kind of a, I just think we need to maximize our...
Well, I, I go back to the number of people served. That's what I'd really like to know is, in each of these projects, what are we talking? I, I can tell you on Fred Haight, the volume on that, that road is the single most-used road in the community of Smith River, and, um, there, there, if you just do it on numbers, that's gonna serve more people than almost any of the projects.
I think, you know, I believe, um, if you're speaking specifically to the adult literacy, I think in the current grant that we have, the 2010, uh, the library was committed to serving 260 adult learners, um, to 14,000 instructional hours that volunteers spend with these...
For the adult, for the adult literacy.
For the adult literacy. Uh, and, you know, that would be what they're committed to under the current grant for the, the two-year period from 2010 to 2012.
Is there room to have both the adult literacy and the Fred Haight Drive in there?
Pardon?
Is there room to include both the adult literacy in?
No, no. You said, we're, we're talking two different...
Because you can only have three, not...
You only have three.
The other question I had is regarding...
No.
Projects that didn't make it.
Pardon?
Projects that didn't make it, and I wanted to ask you why the children's health insurance premium funding didn't make it. I was a little distressed, being one of the people on the community health initiative way back when, when first five, the health clinics and social services combined to partner in that, to make sure that every child under the age of 18 had insurance. Here, we've identified 200 children, and only 22 of the estimated 200 are currently being served, yet we, it, submitted didn't provide compelling information regarding the health and safety impacts of the lack of health insurance in Del Norte County, nor compelling information as to the program's ability to address the problem. What the heck's going on there?
Well, and the, and the proposal, that's, you know, that's, the proposal wasn't really well-prepared, I don't, you know, believe.
I mean, just talking about priorities that we've identified at the board level, that's disappointing.
But when you, when you look at, when you look at $38,000 and one of the three services that will be limited to, when they're, and I'm not saying that the other programs are any more important or less important, but we're limited to three services and $500,000. And if we took one of those services to fund a 38 thou, or the other, the other project that was proposed was $16,000, so you're, you know, maybe there's some other funding sources that, it'd be a lot easier to find $38,000 than it would be $200,000.
I agree, because we've come up with a match before. What I didn't see in here was that small dollar amount. I had the assumption when you're still talking about 78, 178 kids, that it's gotta be a pretty big number.
No, no, it's, it's relatively small number, and that's a sad thing, you know, when they, they limit the number of services that we can provide, then you're, you're having to pick and choose between some really good programs.
Right. Well, what I'd like to hear when the chair gets ready for it is to hear from some of the recipients here as to what the impact would be on them to have a reduction in their two-year allocation, if you will.
Okay, one, one more question.
Sure.
Just is questioning if it's in the realm of possibilities, and that is that, um, the two public service, uh, that are listed, the court advocacy and the senior nutrition program?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a possibility that because the senior center is a, is it called CBO? Because they are a community action agency, is there a way that they could actually fold the literacy program into a community action agency and let it be a pass-through?
I don't know.
I didn't hear what's the answer.
She could, Charlene can speak to that when it comes to public hearing.
Okay. Well, questions from supervisor comments? Okay, so I will, at this point, open up to public hearing. Um, if you can, if you're planning speaking, if you can come up and sign the, the signup sheet, and if you can limit your comments to three minutes or less, um, so I'll go ahead and open it up, Brian.
My name is Charlene Maisy, and, um, some of you may know I wear several different hats in the community and especially with the Community Development Block Grant Program. Um, I'm Jim's counterpart with the city, so I've been involved in this process. Um, but today, I'm here as the executive director for both the senior center and Redwood Cove Community Center. Mostly, I'm here to say thank you for considering those projects in this application. This funding is extremely important to both of those organizations. Um, we have pictures that aren't available today of the damage to the elevator tower at Redwood Cove, and it's pretty scary. Um, for the senior nutrition program, you asked about numbers served. Um, we run two... We run two separate components of the senior center's nutrition program. One is an onsite, what they call a congregate meal program, where folks come in and sit down and have a meal in a social environment. For that program, we serve between 75 and 100 individuals a day and we serve about 1,500 meals a month in that program. For the home-delivered meals program, which is for homebound elderly, we have about 68 to 70 a day that we serve and we serve about 1,400 meals a month through that program. The, I am a little concerned about the proposed reduction in the funding. What we asked for in our proposal was pretty much what we needed to keep the program going at its current level for two years. There's a little bit of extra in there because our staff, who are extraordinarily dedicated and provide really good food. I was amazed when I first ate there that it's very, very good food, very nutritious. They've been there, some of them have been there for 10 years and have never had a raise. We have our second cook who's making 10 cents an hour more than minimum wage at this point. And so there's a little bit extra in that request so that we can get their salaries to a decent level. But for the most part, we asked for what we needed to keep the program going for two years. And a reduction would be a little bit difficult to try to absorb. We do get funding from the Area 1 Agency on Aging for the nutrition program, but it, it does only fund maybe a little less than half of the cost of running it at, at the current level. So I would, you know, I understand that Fred Haight Drive is a very important project, but I would also be a little concerned about whether it could be ready to go and whether there's the other funding left to make it happen cause the CDBG isn't going to fund the whole project. And I would hate to, to reduce some of the public services to include that. So that's, it's kind of a biased opinion, but there it is. And as far as if you chose not to include Fred Haight Drive, I think you could maximize your available pots of money without having to reduce them to pay for your admin. So I haven't looked at the numbers recently, but when we were, we're putting this together, it looked like there was a way to do that. And to answer your question, Martha, about can we fold services in? With CDBG, we couldn't fund CDBG money for a totally separate pro, program. That would count as a different public service. What the senior center could potentially do if they got funding in addition to what we were requesting, we could shift some costs that currently support this nutrition program but are paid for by other funds to CDBG, use those other funds to then
For the adult literacy.
Expand to the literacy. So that would, that would be how we would do it. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Oh, Charlene, what, what is the amount Area 1 actually gives you for senior nutrition?
Between the two programs, it's about 110 to 120,000 dollars. And it's split between congregate and, and home delivery, so we don't have a lot of flexibility to move money from one to the other.
It's easier to find the information from you than from the Humble County people, so.
Thanks.
Uh, any other public comment? Also, if anyone else in the audience is planning to speak, you might come up and sign and list your name and stuff, so we can just go off that.
Um, hi, I am Christine Seletti from Casa of Del Norte. And I do just want to say quickly that I know Casa of Del Norte has already been hit with some drastic budget cuts and, you know, we went from seven staff employees to just down to two. And I'm sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so my voice is really rusty. So, you know, we did stretch our budget out for the two years at the minimum that we could do and so the, any cuts would be very hard for us. We did include one more employee into that position that would help us do volunteer recruitment and work on community outreach. But again, you know, our goal is to recruit as many volunteers in our community to step up on behalf of these children who have no one in their life to help them grow to be productive citizens in our community. And I feel that it is a very important need in our community for the growth of our community. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thanks, Chris. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment at that point, bring it back to the board. There is a motion on the floor. I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Question on the allocation for Fred Haight. $750,000, can it 756, 650, it looks like? Is there a way that can be reduced to 650? And just mean that the road department has to come up with more?
Right.
So that's doable, though? I'm talking about trying to hit the $2 million maximum. I'm, I'm assuming that's why you came up with 750?
650.
650, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if we found a way to overfund $100,000 to senior nutrition programs to allow them to, don't want to say the word supplant, over
Assist.
Assist would be a much better word. You wouldn't be hitting, you'd still only have your three programs, you wouldn't be having your fourth program, but you would allow for the senior literacy to take place at the same time planning for the road in hopes maybe LTICO can come up with some extra money over a two-year period also to assist in a program that we've had on their priority list. My only concern there is then, is there a way to bump it even additionally to make sure that we fully fund Casa?
The, the, and as I, I mentioned earlier is that I arbit, to get our administrative, our general administration, which is up to 7.5%, you don't even have to take that. If you want to put more money into the projects, you know, that, that's okay also. But I arbitrarily reduced all of the, the activities proportionately, 7.5% to come up with this. You don't have to make them equal. You can take all of the administration out of one activity, out of the, the Fred Haight Drive, and make the other ones whole. Or you don't even have to take all 7.5%. So there's, there is some flexibility in, in that, in that area.
Another reason I don't mean to be picking on the road department, but there is that other pot of money that's, we've been asking for year after year after year from LTICO. It is at the top of the priority. Chances are, we should be able to find something in a two-year period. But I'm, I'm realizing the importance of fully funding some of these programs on a two-year thing.
I, I think the, to answer your question on LTICO, cause Tamara spoke on it at our meeting, is the chance of it getting funded in the stipperium's not going to happen. At least for, I think, what, you remember Jerry, what that, I think we're looking 16, 17 out that, that far? So the chance of it getting funded, that's, she was pretty clear that we need to look for another funding source on, on getting the project done.
And how quickly does the money have to be spent on the CDBG? Say we take $500,000 for, for Fred Haight and we need to identify $700,000 to complete the project and we can't do it for two and a half years?
I, I believe that the
Are we penalized to the point to where we can't ask for any more CDBG funds until the money is spent?
The, the 50% rule is 50% for the entire grant award, not on a project-by-project basis.
Okay.
So, so again, you know, as long as it's
You gotta spend a million dollars?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the contract period is three years, but you know, if you're just talking about when you want to apply again, it'd be two years. Yes.
So on the same lines that David is looking at, the way I understand this is that if we were able to roll the set-aside into the community base, into the senior center for, as, instead of asking for 210,000, they ask for 310,000 for the part of the nutrition program, that then the road department's request would be 614,000 and everything would stay whole. We could keep all the projects and, and do the allocation for the 614,000 and, and hit the $2 million mark.
Will you? No, I, no, we can't do that because then we're going over the $500,000 limit that we have in public services.
By how much?
Well, Casa was 227 and if you're talking in
So you're talking 63,000 of this could be moved over.
Well, the asks, the asks from the, from the two, I mean, if you're talking about the, the court advocacy services, there's 18,000 difference, am I, am I getting that right? And, and the nutrition, there's a 16,000 difference? And you're telling, are, am I hearing you right? That you could take that out of the general administration and put it into those two funds to fund those whole?
Yes.
So, so why aren't, why aren't we talking about doing that?
That's what David was talking about, I think.
What about the 100,000 literacy?
Jim, do you want to explain with the general?
Well, there'll only be 63,000 of that if you fully funded.
The general administration pays for me and Jay and others.
It's the cost of
Yeah, no, I, I necessarily wasn't looking to take, to do away with that. I was looking to shift that admin cost to a program that probably
You can shift it, yes.
So you could still get the 150,000, but you could shift that 150,000 to the road project?
Yes.
And then you could take that 150,000 and make the other two programs whole?
Yes.
But you can't add the literacy to those?
You can add 63,000 of it.
You can add 63,000 to the literacy?
Yeah.
Through the senior center.
Yeah, and that's what I would like to see done.
I would agree.
I guess, I guess, I think there'd probably be some additional questions for CDBG before we
Well, can we, I mean, that's, I think that's the direction the board, if we can, we amend the motion to do that, that means we'd still encompass Fred now. So I guess, I guess the question I'd have on roads department, is that going to be adequate or?
I don't, I don't know how you get the adult literacy, isn't that, doesn't that make the third?
No, it's, if, basically, money that right now, some of the money going to nutrition can be
No, but I, I thought that put us over the limit, isn't that why it's not included already?
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be called, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't even have that activity listed. It would be a
Senior center would add it.
A senior center subset, if you will.
Add it to their program offerings.
Well, and, and it would come out of the, for the, if we hit the 2 million with the road in there and you're adding back in 63,000 dollars or whatever, that is going to come out of the road project fund. That's where, any extra money that you're adding back in, fully funding the public services or adding in the senior literacy, the adult literacy, then that's going to
Either the road department or the housing rehab, you know, to reduce the housing dollars. The concern I have about lumping the, those under the senior center is that I think the, I think that HCD might really consider those two completely separate services, even though they're being performed by the same nonprofit.
Well, I wasn't talking about doing that. I was talking about doing a side agreement that the senior center, in lieu of support for the nutrition, would, senior center would take the obligation of the adult literacy. It wouldn't show up on our CDBG at all.
We have support staff that are currently supporting the nutrition program. They're clerical support and they provide reception services for the nutrition program primarily. We're currently funding them with community services block grant money. If we were able to fund those support staff people with community development block grant, they're still part of the nutrition program, but we wouldn't have to be spending our community services block grant program. I could then request from that funder a contract amendment to say we want to provide literacy services using the community services block grant money. Now, I would have to go back and do the budget numbers to find out exactly how much I can shift. It may not be 63,000. I would have to look at, you know, what staffing we have. But that would be, it would not be part of the community development block grant application. It would be totally separate funding. The other way that, that could be done is you could just put the, that 63,000 into your, no, into your $500,000 public service pot. You can have three services in the application. If there's room in there after Casa and the senior center, you could just give the extra money to the literacy program. You wouldn't have to do a pass-through. So there's a couple options that could be looked at.
So that's after the funds are awarded, basically, is that how that would work? If you're shifting the additional 63?
If we were, if the senior center were going to take on the literacy program, we would make all those requests to CSD, Community Services and Development as the funder, to do the contract, once we knew that that's what was going to happen. Up until then, we wouldn't want to do that because
Would there be enough time before our next meeting?
For me to figure out of how much money? Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, I would like to see that done with the adult literacy in the public services, fully funding Casa and rolling in senior nutrition. On the housing, fully funding it because whatever is needed for the senior housing multifamily rehab, if there's more required, we can take it out of housing rehab. And I don't want to take all the admin out of the road. I would like to see a majority of the admin come out of housing rehab, too. I think that's a pot that we can tap. Make sure that there's enough money in the road project.
Yeah.
But the road project, mind you, is going to have to go a little too. We're going to have to come up with some additional excess if it was going to be, you know, gosh, who knows, it was going to be 500,000, well, it was going to be more than that because you had delivery costs, too. So it was going to be 600,000, it may end up being 700,000.
So I guess the question would be back on, would we be able to get some of those numbers from the roads department before our next meeting, too?
Well, it doesn't matter because we know we're going to have to pay more.
Yeah.
It's, it's just what amount we want to ask for in the grant to help us with that project. And I see, so I see the, the flexibility in public service, once you know your numbers. So if it's not 63, if it's only 40, then that's the number that we plug in there. Housing rehab, you have the flexibility there to move money around within housing and also pick up a good portion of the admin through that.
Yes.
And then we can tap in some money for Fred Haight Drive.
Take that a minute with your question.
I, I think it's there, you adjust the figures however you want. But I, I think the ask needs to be the $2 million.
I, I agree, and I, we would be there.
Okay, so we, we just, at this point, give direction to staff or do we?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we'll
That's a suggestion, don't do anything right now.
Wait, we will, you want to rescind the motion and we'll just give direction to staff?
Okay.
Yeah, so the motion's been rescinded, but direction's been given to staff to come back with a reworking in the numbers for
Does that give you enough time, Jim, to put all this together?
I, I can, because I can, in the meantime, I'm going to be moving forward with, you know, assuming that, you know, by, on the 27th, that will be approved, you know, like we discussed today and then
Use her, her money and figure out what the road money is to bring it up to $2 million, bingo.
You want, you want to, though, you want me to leave Casa, Casa back up to where they had requested?
Fully funded.
Fully fund the nutrition program plus 63,000, which would bring us to the maximum for public services.
If 63 is allowable. If it's not, it's got to be ramped down to whatever is allowable.
Take the administration out of housing rehab. Leave the multifamily rehabilitation whole to what they had requested and whatever's left would go into Fred Haight Drive.
Yeah.
You got it.
I'll, we'll go with that and I should be able to come back with a resolution then on the 27th that would reflect that.
So where's the fatal flaw?
I don't know until I submit the I might, I might also, just, just so there's no surprises. When these things are scored, each one of those, as they're calling them buckets, are, they're competitive in their, they stand alone. It's not the entire application, so not the entire application. So we might be awarded a public service, but not the housing. We might be awarded the road and not public service. They can, you know, so each one of them is going to be scored separately, too. So it's a...
I, so you're going to bring it back. At this point, we're going to continue the hearing then to the next meeting?
Well, I don't think you have to continue your hearing. I'll come back to a, just to approve a resolution.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Please.
Did you close the hearing?
I, yeah, I'm closing it right now. It's all closed. Hearing is officially closed. We're going to take a two-minute break here. Since we're done with timed items, we are going to go on to item 17. I think you're going to get 17 and 18 at the same time. Is that the plan?
No, they'll be separate.
Separate, okay. Review the mitigation monitoring plan for the terminal projects and give consent to the border coast regional airport authority for the use of privately held and county-owned property in developing final designs for the terminal MMP for this project, utilizing Pacific Shore subdivision as detailed in the MMP as requested by the airport director. Jim?
Well, this update is basically to show you what we have at 30% design. And as you can see, we're using pack shores as the mitigation site as requested by coastal commission. And the first one we want to look at today is the terminal project. We'll review these separately so they don't get, even though they are together, they won't get lumped together in the processing. And the terminal project is a pretty small amount, and since it is a development project, we've pretty much gone along with the coastal recommendation of four to one for our mitigation ratio. We're only impacting about a quarter of an acre, which means we need about 1.1 acres at pack shores to mitigate that. This will involve removal of county roads is what we're looking at, which will also entail buying private lots to be able to access the county roads. You will get this, you'll get a final approval of this plan when we get further along in design. So we don't really need an approval. Just, I'm just bringing you up to date on what we're doing so you're not blindsided. And again, you'll get another shot at it, but I do have Misha Schwartz of Winsler and Kelly, now GHD, here today. He's our environmental consultant for these projects and has put together this plan.
Jim, do we still have frog tunnels in the road?
We still have frog tunnels in the road, yes, we do. We have a, the Fonzie for the terminal project was issued in the federal NEPA finding of no significant impact, was issued in August of last year. And through the appeal process with coastal, we got a notice of intent to issue a coastal development permit with a lot of conditions that we are now trying to meet. So that's where we're at in the design process, putting together the CDP application to meet all the requirements that we've been given. And the frog tunnels are one of those requirements. But they'll be mitigated or created on site. There's no additional mitigation for the...
Are we going to map how much usage they get?
We have to monitor that, yes.
Yeah, curious to see what the volume of the...
GPS on them.
There'll be a little counter there, I guess. I don't know.
So the bottom line is, is we, this is the only condition that requires mitigation as far as wetlands on the terminal.
This is the wetland mitigation for the terminal.
Right. And we're going forward. We've already fought all those fights with setbacks and tunnels and all that crud and...
Yes.
Trucking on down the line.
We've had our day in court, so to speak.
And I...
I was just going to let Misha give you the breakdown of the impacts and the plan, since he put it together.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim. Again, my name, my name's Misha Schwartz. So we've picked up where BCR and URS left off with regards to this project. The terminal's well on its way with regards to environmental entitlements and through the SEQA process and through the NEPA process and partially through the permitting process. The project has obtained a notice of intent to issue a permit from the coastal commission, and those are the conditions that you've alluded to with the frog tunnels and the required four to one mitigation. And URS did prepare a conceptual mitigation plan that actually had many different areas where mitigation was potentially proposed. We, through various discussions, the coastal commission and further research, have now made that plan more specific, and we have advanced that plan to a sort of higher level of design. The mitigation monitoring plan is required by the, by the resource agencies, that being fishing game, coastal commission, the regional water quality control board, and the army corps of engineers. And the mitigation monitoring plan have various components, talking about the actual impacts, talking about the actual mitigation, what kind of plants we're going to plant, at what densities, what kind of monitoring is going to be proposed and the success over five years. And then what's also required is adaptive management plan, which would occur if the mitigation failed. Of course, in Delnar County, it's very wet and we have a high likelihood of success here, so we're not, hoping not to implement our adaptive management plan. Jim already did allude to the impacts that are occurring, and for the terminal, that being the apron, the parking lot and the terminal building itself, as well as the alternate road or the loop road, there is approximately 0.2 acre, 0.28 acres of impact. And the four to one ratio that was alluded to in the notice of intent then would require about a 1.1 acres of mitigation. And the hope is to utilize roads at Pacific shores and specifically utilize sections of roads that were pushed through wetlands, meaning that when you look, when you stand on the road and you look at either side of the road, you see that there's wetlands vegetation. So it's pretty simple restoration. We're not really creating wetlands or restoring them by removing the asphalt, the, in any wet, in any minor subbase that was there and then replanting it. So pretty much, pretty, pretty simple, simple there. Not a huge amount of acreage involved. So that's sort of a summary of the mitigation monitoring plan. You know, we are trying to balance the needs of many agencies and certain agencies are interested in frogs and other agencies are interested in butterflies. And I know a few of you have already heard about this, and so it is sort of balancing act and, and obviously moving ahead with the coastal commission and, and the conditions they have on the NOI to proceed to a coastal development permit.
So, Misha, and since I don't sit on that board, what, who came up with the ratio on mitigation?
So I can hopefully get this right, but during the, I think it was post-SEQA process for the terminal, that the footprint of the terminal was an entirely different location. It was within what I call the triangle, which is east of Del Rupert Road. And the coastal commission came back and had made the conclusion that although many of those areas were not wetlands, they were, they were deemed as environmentally sensitive habitat areas or ESHAs. And ESHAs are protected under the coastal act and your own LCP equally as well as wetlands. And, and so they wanted to move the terminal out of that area. And as at that process with BCR going through the coastal mission process and needing to get that notice of intent in order to file the Fonzie, in order to satisfy the coastal zone management act, the, the negotiation or the, the permit was agreed to be at four to one. Now, we're going to talk about the RSA and we're not taking, taking that approach on the RSA. We have more time, and I think BCR was under pressure to, to get that permit through to, in order to obtain their Fonzie. And I don't know if, Jim, you want to add anything else?
I'll talk about that later.
Okay. We'll go on to, this is the next, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Now, when we're talking about ratios, and this is four to one ratio, but we also have the ratio or the percentage that they give you for the acreage that you come up with, correct?
Yeah.
So, and what is that percentage going to be at Pacific shores? The same 50%, 25%?
Well, so in, in, in this MMP, we, since it's such a small footprint, we didn't look at the juxtaposed potential parcels that had to be purchased. And so there are going to be some parcels that are going to be purchased. And depending where we put that alignment, and we can utilize geographic information systems to, to maximize the amount of road we would use that's not in front of private property. So if it's not in front of private property and it's in front of state-held property, then that would negate the necessity to purchase those properties because we're not, we're not cutting off access to a private property. So there's a possibility there could be zero purchase of juxtaposed private parcels, but we haven't figured out exactly where that's going to be yet.
But we still have to come up with whatever percentage they're going to give us for credit for the, for the land we use up. Am I off, completely off base here?
Well, by credit, so again, you're...
You mean to tell me we only have to come up with 1.1 acres?
No, you do. So you, you have to convert, you have to take road at Pacific shores that has asphalt on it, and you need to remove that asphalt and remove the subbase for 1.1 acres.
And that's it?
Correct.
For the terminal, Roger?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and that was, you know, even though I, I don't agree on the ratio, because this is development to some extent, I probably could go along with, but I think it's extortion. I think it's, I think it's way out of line. I think it's wrong. I think it's wrong, especially in a county like ours that doesn't have enough privately held land as it is. And I know I'm, you know, I'm just rampant.
Well, I, I agree with you, but I think this, the next agenda item, we really get to take off on that. This one, we've been down that road.
Yeah.
And we fought that fight. And we've lost or compromised or whatever we had to do to get to the position we are in now, to where we darn near got a shovel in the ground for a new terminal building.
Yeah.
And I would say, let's get on with it.
Okay, let's go on to...
Thanks, Misha.
Yeah, let's, let's go on to item 18.
Well, it's 17.
No action.
No action on 17. It's just for review.
Consent and review. I don't know if that requires action.
I think consensus.
Direction to staff, if you have any, I suppose.
To whose staff?
We can't give you...
We can't give you, you're not our staff.
Wrong board.
Well, I would move to, it says the board has supervised consent to utilize for planning purposes, county-owned or private, pack shores and Point St. George for the terminal mitigation, and I move so.
Second.
Move second. Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the board, and can you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure? Yes. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, number 18, review the mitigation monitoring plan for the runway safety area project and give consent to the border coast regional airport authority for the use of the privately held and county-owned property in developing final designs for the RSA MMP for this project, utilizing Pacific Shore subdivision and Point St. George property as requested by the airport director. Jim?
This is basically a bigger version of what we just looked at, in that we are impacting 15 acres on airport of wetlands. And at a four to one ratio, that means we need to replace 60 acres of wetlands. We've had conversations with coastal and basically told them we don't have 60 acres of wetland. If we used all of pack shores, there's not 60 acres there. We believe there's 35 acres, give or take a little, to be determined in final design. But the main difference I'm going to point out here is, as David said earlier, in order to get the Fonzie for the terminal, we had to have a notice of intent to issue a CDP. Now, that has changed a bit with the RSA's in that the FAA is going to make their Fonzie contingent on the coastal development permit being acquired later on. So the Fonzie is going to be issued real soon for the RSA, and it'll be contingent on CDP approval. So we're not waiting, we don't have to wait to have the CDP in place or a notice of intent at this time to get the Fonzie, which will free up final design money from the AIP funding source, so we can continue to design this, even as we work out the details with coastal. But we did have a meeting with coastal specifically on RSA, and we had like 12 sites with potential mitigation. This was about three months ago. Prior to that, we had a meeting in the field where we went around with all the agencies and looked at everything and talked about what we could maybe do at various locations. And as Misha alluded to, they all have different priorities. And primarily coastal was interested in pack shores. That's where they wanted all our mitigation at, which is where we're focusing our efforts at this time. During the meeting, they cut down to 12 sites to about four or five, and those are what you see in your packet right now. There's a little bit of something in there for everybody. Fishing game wanted the McNamara subdivision property, 22 acres. Fishing wildlife wanted the Point St. George western Lily habitat, and coastal wanted pack shores. Now, our proposed ratio here is, and the county wanted us not to use all of the property at pack shores for one project. So the effort here was to give something to everybody, and that's where we came up with the 1.5 to one for wetland fill or wetland creation. And when you add it... with the 1.5 to one for wetland fill, or wetland creation, and when you add it all together with the other properties, it comes out to a total of about 3.5 to one. We're still not at the four to one, and we don't believe we can get there. Now, when we had this conversation with Coastal, they were, this Coastal staff, they were talking among themselves about what they're going to do if we can't make it, and we pretty much left the room with the idea that they were going to check with legal, and see what options we had available, if we didn't have the four to one land available. Now, Jerry was asking earlier about credit for lots we purchased. In the terminal project, we were just looking at credit for the roads we removed, and as Misha stated, we may or may not have to buy lots. For the RSA, we are going to have to buy lots, possibly 80 to 120 lots. They're upland ESHA, and we can't go dig a hole on those lots to make wetlands, so all we can do is transfer them from private ownership to public trust with fishing game probably, we haven't determined that yet, but Coastal doesn't want to give us any credit for those lots at all. Maybe a quarter of an acre per acre, but, so we would be buying those lots and getting very little credit towards that four to one ratio with the lots. Now, the Clean Air, or Clean Water Act requires one to one mitigation, wetland replacement, no net loss. We can meet that, but the four to one is, we don't see how we can possibly come up with that for this project. But I'll let Misha talk more about that at this end.
So they give no, it doesn't count that you have ESHA, environmentally sensitive habitat for the wetland?
Well, it counts. It counts if you take it, but it doesn't count if you give it back.
Exactly.
No, I know.
Well, and I think the other consideration is the quality of wetlands that were changing. I mean, you're talking about a maintained area that's mowed-
It's seasonal, too. It's only in winter.
And it's a seasonal, it's a seasonal thing. So I think, I think they're way out of line on this.
We've had a lot of discussion at Bakra along these lines, and along the line of the fact that the airport precedes the Coastal Act, and precedes the state parks, and one would assume that not only the footprint of the airport, but the operations of the airport also precede the Coastal Act. This is not a development project, it's a mandated compliance project, a safety project that Congress is mandating, so it's not like we went out and looked for this one. It's one we have to fill for safety reasons. How that's all going to play out, I'm not sure, but again, this is the compromise plan we've come up with so far to meet everybody's requests. Misha?
Thanks, Jim. So yes, we have been in negotiations with the commission, specifically Mr. Baskin, Mr. Merrill, and Dr. Dixon, and we outlined a larger, what I call mitigation package, knowing that there was not a chance that we could actually mitigate 60 acres of wetlands at Pacific shores. Our GIS calculations show, based on juxtaposed wetlands of the road, as Jim mentioned, we have 34 acres, and it's our understanding that the county has interest in maintaining some of those possible roads for further mitigation, and so we came up with 1.5 to wetlands being about 24 acres of wetlands that we're talking about taking road and digging out the asphalt and subbase, like for the terminal. So the terminal's four to one ratio, and although precedent-setting, and maybe slightly aggravating, it doesn't have the kind of consequence that it does with regards to the RSA project because of the amount of acreage. And so coming up with this mitigation package, we thought was the way to go, and we've done this before. We have gotten substantially lower ratios on projects. We just recently received a notice of intent to issue a permit for the Salt River Restoration Project, a $20 million project. That's a restoration project, though, so it's different.
It's very different.
And we got one to one, so just, it is all, it is about the negotiation, and it's about the package. So, so right now, we've whittled it down, we had a lot of other ideas, like removing refuse from Pacific shores, and replanting forests that have been impacted by off-road vehicles, and the commission did not seem interested in those with regards to gaining credit. So if we're not going to gain any credit for certain activities that are going to cost the authority money, we're not going to be doing those as part of the mitigation package. So now we have this package, that, as Jim mentioned, has many components, and one interesting component is, is the moving of the western lily fence at the airport, in, slightly into Point St. George. That would obviously relieve deer from entering on the runway, it would also protect the western lily from heavy-duty deer impacts and grazing. And at that point, we would propose that those areas would be mowed, about four to eight acres would be mowed, and asking for 50% credit on that activity. Of course, the western lily's a federally-listed species, you know, from a biological standpoint, that has a lot of clout, and the US Fish and Wildlife Service being very interested in that restoration project, as the population's actually decreasing because it's not grazed or managed by fire. So that's where we stand at this point. Again, we took what URS had done, and eliminated a bunch of other sites that we looked at, Crescent City Marsh, the landfill, Smith River, all those were basically eliminated because of input from the Coastal Commission, and now we have this plan, which they have, you know, we've talked about it with them, they haven't actually seen this plan, so we're now getting very close to completing this 3%, and completing the permit applications, and submitting this to the agencies, and moving this forward with a 1.5 to one ratio for wetlands, and a 3.5 total. And how they're going to accept the percentages, you know, Jim alluded to about 80 to 120 lots may have to be purchased. Again, we're going to use GIS to maximize the ability not by private parcels, and how the commission exactly is going to react with regards to the percentages we give on the western lily acre to acre, and then on the, on the right-of-ways of the roads, too. So the actual asphalt in the roads is about 18 to 24 feet wide, but the right-of-way is about 40 feet wide, so there's sections of the road that will be, that will be purchased and preserved, but won't be touched. And so we're hoping to get 50% credit on that acreage, too. And we're thinking about 14 total acres of road right-of-way that are not asphalt, 50% credit would give us about seven acres. This report talks about 10, so we're still working out those numbers.
So, Misha, I got a question for you. This is more of a generic question, but it does pertain to this. What is the logic behind a four to one mitigation versus, I mean, I can understand a one to one, I don't understand four to one.
Yeah.
I can allude to that.
Sure.
There's two main reasons in my mind why the commission and/or other agencies had asked for a higher than one to one ratio. The first one is temporal loss of the habitat. So if you have mature riparian vegetation on a river, and, you know, alders and willows and poplars, and you remove those, and then you want to go plant them somewhere else, it takes time for that habitat to come online again, so the migratory birds can nest, and it acts as a wildlife corridor, and that takes time. And so in my mind, impact, you know, mature habitats that take a decade or more to come online, you know, that, that kind of, those kind of mitigation ratios make sense. In this case, we're impacting areas that are mowed, and we're impacting areas that are primarily sluice edge, and that, that kind of habitat, in my mind, can come online quickly, if, not within a few years, because we're going to plant plugs, it's going to be wet, and then that's going to grow and provide habitat for the red-legged frog and other species that use it. And so a four to one ratio for the kind of impact we're talking about, the RSA, really doesn't make sense from a temporal loss standpoint. The second reason why those high ratios are seen is for mitigation success. There's a lot of studies that have been done across California, United States, that show poor success of mitigation areas. I think a lot of those poor success areas are like vernal pools in the Santa Rosa Plain, very difficult to emulate those, and you're talking about federally-listed fairy shrimp that you'd need to create habitat for, very difficult. In this case, we're removing material that was filled in wetlands, the water's going to flood back in, we're going to plant plants, and, you know, I think it's got a 95 to 100% chance of being successful. So, and that, so, and this, all this can be argued, and it is argued many times, when you are dealing with these agencies with regards to the mitigation ratios, and as we get further into it, and as they start commenting on our plan, these discussions and arguments and writing will probably be put forth.
Yeah, I think you run into that, where percentage of even private lands in this county are, I mean, small in comparison to the public lands. We should be given some credit for the amount of wetlands we already have preserved and protected as a percentage of the county. It's huge.
Unfortunately, that-
That's a logical way to do it.
It's not how the law works.
I don't, you know, we can't, this board can't act on the application that you're going to do for the border coast, but I think that this board ought to limit the number of acres that would be available at Pacific shores, and I would limit that to a one to one at 100%.
Okay, and Jim, do you want to comment on that, or? And I can, too, after Jim's done. So, so I understand you're doing that, and by doing that, you meet the bare bones minimum of no net loss in the state of California, and with the, with the Army Corps of Engineers.
We have those other projects, the Point St. George project, and we also have the acreage of the private land of the McNamara property.
Right.
That's to be included, so.
That's right, so, you know, it, so your ultimate ratio may end up being three to one, or something like that, with a one to one component for wetlands. I can tell you that that's going to be difficult with the Coastal Commission, and if that's the action that the Board of Supervisors is going to take, then of course, that will be included in our report with regards to the available land within the roads at Pacific shores to allow for wetlands restoration.
I have a couple of questions. I understand the angst about the four to one, and your, your, your position, your ideological position of the land.
I just think it's logical.
I understand that. However, I also understand that our economic development and our future is tied to both this terminal and to this RSA project, and we cannot lose sight of that price. And to argue for land that's not going to be developed at Pacific shores, that you want to make it a one to one, and then I try to hook that one to one to the, to the Salt River project, is absolutely ludicrous. Because that project is a restoration project, that project meets the agriculture rehabilitation, and it frees up ag land that's within the Coastal Commission, that's part of the Coastal Commission's description. So I find that, it's like, really frustrating, because I understand their position, but I don't like it to be fed with not proper information. And so the one to one on that Salt River project is extremely different than what this would be in relationship to the, to the, to the airport. And for us to keep, we want, we need to have our airport done, and we need to have a consultant that brings forward projects that can fly. And I'm concerned that even a 1.5 is not going to fly. It may get you in the room to negotiate, and you may be able to negotiate possibly to that final 3.5 that you've got, based on the argument of the types of soils and the types of wetlands. But I find it extremely unfortunate that, that the ratio argument, I mean, I, the ratio argument of replacement, and the success rate, and the wetland issue, is a mountain that we can't climb over, and if we want to try to just throw pebbles at it, our RSA project isn't going to, we're not going to get to lift it to fruition. So I would suggest that we not put those kind of limitations, that we ask the Border Coast Authority to continue to move forward, and do the best job you can, and argue it the best that you can. But if you limit it to the one to one on wetland, you're going to be, you're going to be out of de novo, it's going to buy you another year, it's going to buy you another year, possibly two years of consultant fees and attorney fees, and you're going to end up back possibly to 3.5, 3.5, but more than likely to four. So I would urge us as a board to say to the Border Coast Authority and to the consultant, please continue, do whatever wetland proposals that you need, and then I personally would urge you to rework that 1.5, because I don't think it's going to fly.
Well, I appreciate that, and I do want to restate that I only mentioned the 1.1 ratio, is that the four to one ratio is not policy, it's not law.
Well, we know that.
Yeah, and so, and I've been working on the Salt River Project day and night, I'm the lead senior scientist on it, so it's a very special project, and, and unique, and very unique. But the reality is, is that the maximum amount of acreage that we could get out of the roads, if we convert all the roads that have juxtaposed wetlands at Pacific shores, not touching any of the parcels, because they have nectary plants for the federally-listed butterfly, and so on and so forth, and they're ESHAs, and so if you start messing with a dune and making it a wetlands, and you got to replace the dune at four to one, and you chase your tail to your dizzy, you know, we, if we converted everything, we could only get, you know, somewhere around, a little over two to one. And so, you know-
I thought the report said three, 3.5 total.
That's total. So we're impacting 15 acres, and we think, using GIS, so we have about 34 total acres of roads that could be removed, that would easily be converted to wetlands. And so we went with 24 acres, at net, which is a 1.5 to one for wetlands, you know, thinking that the Board of Supervisors and the county would not want to relinquish all of the potential mitigation that would be possible out there for county projects or other projects that may be proposed in the future.
I, I kind of have a hard time finding the rationale behind what you're saying. When you're taking something that is a so-called wetland, that is virtually valueless in the wetland community, or world, whatever you want to say, and we are actually going to provide a better wetland in an area that now has a road on it. And to tell me that that's not a better thing, that that one to one would not be better than what we're, than what we're-
What's there.
I'm not arguing that it would be better, best, or, I'm arguing that this level of a one to one will be enough of a red flag that it'll put the, it'll put the RSA project in jeopardy, and that's where you have to keep your eye on the price.
But it should not.
But it will.
But it should not.
Should, should not, you know, I mean, you know, if I lived in a world of shoulds and shouldn't, we would, you know, but we don't. We live in this other world of reality, that this is how it works. You know, I shouldn't have to buy new light bulbs, because they should last forever, but I do. I mean, there's a whole bunch-
That's totally irrational. I'm trying to use rationale, and you're going out on the-
I know, there's a whole bunch of shouldn'ts in the world. I'm just saying that our priority here is this project.
No, our priority is the future.
Of Pacific shores?
The future of this, of this community. And if you limit us, if you take everything that we've got to negotiate with for the future, what are we doing when we have nothing? Well, if we give it all up for this project, we give everything up that we've got, which is what you're suggesting, we give everything up of what we've got, and we have another project, we're all done. So put a fork in us, we're down the road. Is that what you're saying?
I don't know how you're rationalizing it, when you'd be all done.
We have nothing else to mitigate with.
You know, we got away from the land grab of Pacific shores with the terminal project. We were successful with that. We went forward with Coastal Commission and fought the good fight, and ended up with a parking lot with someplace it probably shouldn't be, but it's going to be there, so we're done. This is just a little bit different. This is not a development project. I think you eloquently stated it. This is a federally mandated safety program, okay? Oh, by the way, has to do with the economic viability of our community from here to Ed Fane item. There's a difference. You know, I don't know whether that ranks higher or lower than the Salt Creek project. I would think it ranks higher, and more of a reason for a one to one. There's no reason to be blackmailed by Peter Doug, by the Coastal Commission, or whomever is their spokesperson, to gain more land than is necessary to complete the project. And arbitrarily to decide that, to hold the community hostage, is not right in this project. We've been held hostage before in other projects, and we will be held hostage again in the future. But this is just a little different pay grade, when you're talking about federally mandated safety improvements, safety mitigation, whatever you want to call it, safety program. We addressed this back at NACO with the, with the feds. What happens when you have a federally mandated program, and local, or state, or agencies get in your way? Who holds the trump card? holds the trump card? Now, I know we're going to have to negotiate this, but I am not willing to throw in the towel because somebody tells me, well, you can't do that. You have to give me four-to-one. The game is skewed on their behalf to begin with, as you said. We could be chasing our tails, you know? Escha doesn't count. It's got to be wetland, but it's got to be good wetland. It's got to be, okay. You know, I don't want to be an expert in this. I think you are. I think we know the timeline. I think we're not going to risk anything within reason. I think the ball is going to be thrown back in the Coastal Commission's court to say, this is reasonable. This is reasonable under the guise of federally mandated safety programs. That is a requirement, okay? It's for an airport that was there before you were. It's not for development. It is for safety. And this is the best we can offer and negotiate there. So, on two phases, I don't want to see our board tie the Border Coast Regional Authority, but I really resent having a spokesperson from the Coastal Commission tell me what I can and cannot do at this point in time.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying go for the four-to-one. I'm saying that the Border Coast Authority needs to have, they need to have our, they need to have flexibility. If they have to go to a 1.5, if they have to go to a two, however those negotiations...
I would like to make those arguments that I just did now in front of the Coastal Commission and see where...
Yeah, that would be fine. I'm just saying we don't want to limit it and say one-to-one because then you're going to be coming back and it's going to be...
We got to start somewhere.
Just to add a couple of things to what Martha was saying, our previous experience, we knew it'll take longer and cost more. This RSA project needs to be under construction in 2013 for us to make the 2015 deadline. If we haven't got an agreement by then, the FAA will make our RSAs compliant. And they will do that by move and paint and shorten and run. So, that's not really an option for us. So, there is that 2015 deadline to meet, and how we get there is yet to be determined.
Okay. So, do we need a motion then, I guess?
Well, I think in this case, I would just like to see you give direction to, obviously there's... If you're going to make a motion to restrict to one-to-one, it ties our hands that the Border Coast is what we can negotiate. I think telling, I as, and Jerry, I know you too, on the Border Coast would like to see a one-to-one, and we would like to see that argument made, period. But we need to be able to negotiate. Whether it goes to 1.5, I think we also have a right to dig our heels in if it goes, it goes too high. I don't...
So, you're throwing a motion up there?
Well... Well, I guess the Board of Supervisors would consent to utilize for planning purposes the county-owned or private property at Pacific shores and Point St. George for the RSA mitigation monitoring plan without specifying the exact...
Mitigation.
Mitigation. If you have something to say, say it, Martha.
Well, I was just going to suggest that you would want to have the land, you would want to have the McNamara 818 parcel with other options.
Those are, those are private, private property.
Okay.
So, that was the inclusion.
I thought it was private land at Pacific shores, sorry.
Well, because, and I'm going to leave it like that because I think we may have to identify other private property.
Okay, second.
Second motion and second. Any public comment? Okay, bring it back to the, all those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed?
No.
No, I'll vote in favor of it.
I just wanted to think, I think that we should also in our plan, sure that we press that this is an essential coastal use, that that be a full-court press in relationship to the lack of need for mitigation and what it's an essential service. Because that's in the language. And then, as far as, if feds say you have to do it, it's my understanding, but I'm a neophyte there as far as learning all the rules, it's my understanding that they will ask for consistency determination from coastal. They can't really dance around that limit, which is unfortunate, but it's how it works. So, but I think, I truly believe that if you make a good argument, it can fly because it's a new coastal commission. But the one-to-one is a little bit...
I would make the request from, and that you come back to the board if it does get up to two-to-one because I would definitely want to know about that because it would change my vote.
Well, is it 1.5 now, the three-point something is on the...
The whole package.
That is, it's on the way they like to figure to take more land.
I believe the next action would be for us to file our application and then get feedback from the agencies, which I can bring back to you to tell you what the result is.
Sure.
It is, it is so disheartening to have gone through this whole thing again. And I'm glad for the warning shots. Because every time we thought we were doing good on the other project, you know, there were submarined and thrown out of our parking lot area and this and that and everything else. Just when you think you're moving along, there still is that element of crippling this economy by decapitating our infrastructure when it comes to transportation. And this is another attempt. I hope we survive.
I guess the most frustrating thing is it extremely be subjective as to what numbers they come up with too. It's, I don't buy the logic at all. And just saying it's the law doesn't make it logic. There's lots of laws out there.
It's not the law. The law is one-to-one.
I can also tell you that there's some, there's some, I passed it to Gretchen, but there are some identified court cases that actually say that mitigation determination, that you can agree upon the numbers, but the exact location is not permit-dependent. And so, those cases may be of help.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Can I have something clarified, please? There was no opposed, correct?
Jerry was opposed.
Thank you.
There was a...
Got kind of muddled in there.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Item 19, approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Supervisors to the Redevelopment Agency Oversight Committee and direct staff to advertise for the position of a public member on the committee.
Previously, the Board of Supervisors had made the appointment of two supervisors to the RDA committee. What the Board of Supervisors will be allowed under the law will be one committee member and then a, an appointment of a public member. So, we're asking that one of the two existing members that have already been appointed be the sole member. It doesn't say you can or can't have an alternate, but take the action for one of the supervisors to be on the RDA oversight committee and then...
So, we've determined the law actually only requires one supervisor, not two.
And then, direct staff to advertise for a public member. That's the other action the board has under the law.
And we're going to throw a little twist in there. And I think we appointed, because of volunteer Supervisor McClure and Supervisor Nemar, both are currently running for elections within the city limits. And I would offer to relieve you of any potential conflict with constituents or having to do with loyalties, to throw my hat in there, to be a member on this redevelopment thing, to relieve you of any perceived influences within the city. Because, well...
I already feel it's going to be messy and not be...
Make a motion on that?
It's, it's up to you.
Okay.
Gratification by the board.
I'm good with the...
Unless, of course, one of you two wants it.
No, Supervisor Finnegan's in.
I think...
Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There was a aye.
Okay.
You know, part of the reason too is, is it will, it looks like this governor is going to turn to counties to formulate the new economic development vehicle. And it'd be nice to be at both tables.
Okay, going on to item 20, consider miscellaneous legislative budget matters pertinent to the county of Dunlop. I'll advise the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments.
Earlier Supervisor Finnegan went over some of the issues at the federal level, including the SRS and the transportation bill. He kind of stole my thunder on that one, so I'll stay away from that at this point. The ledge platform and the action of the, sending the letters to the, to our advocate to get to our legislators, obviously went over well because they got an email saying, thanks, we're getting those to them immediately. And that's, it's good to be on the ball because if we're the first ones in, we're the first ones they look at.
Have we forwarded our state representatives as well?
The ledge platform has, this is a, these are the annual...
The federal ones.
To the federal legislators. So, they'll reflect the ledge platform. The, also during the meeting, I just got an email in regards to PERS, and it appears our rates will be going up again because they've now reduced their, the percentage of their revenue projection by about a half a percent. So, that entail will come back to the local agencies. So, we'll be seeing that here pretty soon.
Okay, I wonder what they're doing with their money. And margins up 8% the first two months of the year. Have they reduced their rate of return estimate?
It's, they attempted to have it done last year also, and PERS argued that they shouldn't, they didn't want, PERS didn't argue it. It was argued by the local agencies that it's a bad time to do that based on everybody's budgets. It would be, it will be absorbed by local governments and agencies that are involved in PERS. It's another cost that we'll see coming down the road. On the budget issues, if you'd like, I can just touch on...
So, we're on item 21. Okay, so, approve and approve the following recommendations. Receive and file the mid-year budget update as submitted by the county administrative officer and the auditor controller, and direct the departments maintain revenue and expenditures as estimated in the mid-year report, and continue working on solutions to reduce net county costs. Three, freeze non-essential general fund positions that become vacant prior to year-end, and any non-general fund positions that result in increased cost to the general fund, and freeze all non-essential services and supplies expenditures as requested by the county administrative officer.
In your agenda, you'll see the overall memo for the budget. The projections at mid-year, without the issues that come from the AB 109 consequences, the departments have done well and stayed within their budgets to the greater extent. We do have some revenue that we've asked individual departments to go out and, and put some interest in because that, it is projected in our budgets. And if they aren't going to get the interest, we need to know that immediately, which will be part of a fund balance or a negative fund balance. Essentially, what you see before you is the consequences of AB 109 and the fact that we have lost some program revenue in the sheriff's office. As I mentioned earlier in, but some of the budget reports, overall, our departments have done pretty well. Some are hitting their projections, some are coming under a little bit below, and we've had some revenue that has come in through the Community Development Department and others that assist us each year. So, general fund-wise, you know, we have been looking strictly at general fund on this one. The other part of this is our health fund. And you'll notice in the budget, there isn't a specific number given for the projected deficit on the health fund because it is, it fluctuates so much, and it's dependent on a lot of different, different things. Obviously, stop-loss revenue that comes in can adjust that up and down. So, it's relatively significant at the projection right now, but truth be told, we will not know until the end of the year. Claims come in, you know, you just, at any given time, it's hard to just come up with a year-end, a mid-year. But we can tell you with no uncertain terms, it's upside down at this point. We are addressing that through the brokerage services. And their first, first line will be to go out and start analyzing our plan, look at claims more closely than they are looked at at this point, and start challenging some of those immediately so that we can find as much savings as possible. We had been asked numerous times about establishing checks and balances, determining where we can come up with additional revenue. Well, this is more of a savings.
Well, and that's what I'm hearing mostly, is that where we're going to cut or where we're freezing. But I'm not hearing any revenue generation at all. And I guess that's been a point of frustration for me over the last few years, is I'd like to know what we're generating just from our investments and stuff. Because I don't hear that. I have yet to attend an investment policy committee, and I'm on that. I'd like to have it as a standing quarterly report from the Treasury report to the board. And I would see the rest of the supervisors want to know what revenue is being generated out of that office also.
In the, in the case of our investments, you'd want to make a direction to our Treasury to come forward at some point on whatever schedule that the board wants.
Can't you convene a meeting?
I'm not the chair of it.
Who is?
The Treasury is, I believe. I don't know. I haven't been at one of the meetings yet.
Can't you ask to have a meeting?
I think you are.
The, so the action taken today are some nominal steps to try to curtail costs as much as possible. Obviously, we still need to run our businesses, which means service and supplies will be expended over the next three months. We're asking, what this is, is direction to the department heads for the board, whom they answer to, to tighten up as much as possible. It's not saying, don't buy pens and pencils so you can't do your, your business. But if there's something in here that you have not purchased, that you had budgeted at the beginning of the year, it's probably not needed in the next three months, so bypass it. Regarding the positions, we don't have a tremendous number of general fund positions that are turning over. However, we will need to look at each one of those, and we'll have to make a decision whether or not those are critical positions or not. Every department will say every open position in the general fund is critical right now. And I can't necessarily disagree with them because as they look at running the services that are provided, yeah, every position's critical. Can we get away with it for the next two or three months? That'll be a decision that will have to be made. And we will sit down with each department and discuss that and look at the pros and cons. If you have a single position professional with no backup, I would suggest that we, we will refill that position in order to give that person backup. If you have multiple positions, you're probably going to be leaving it open for the rest of the year. At this point, you know, like I said, the focus is on the general fund. Non-general fund is less of an impact on us. And as far as the day-to-day from here on out, we'll focus on those. You will notice though, in there, it does say, any non-general fund positions that result in increased cost to the general fund. So, we'll be looking at each position. It isn't limited just to the general fund, but obviously, general fund positions are more of an impact. Maintaining revenue and expenditures as estimated, that should be pretty straightforward. We don't tend to have departments that go out and make extreme purchases at the end of the year just because our philosophy is not a lose it or use it, or use it or lose it. And so, we continue to...
Send or use it.
Lose it or use it.
Thank you, Charles.
In that sense, you know, I believe the departments have done well. And it's tight, and these budgets are tight. And the service and supplies have been cut very closely. So, every year, we go line by line.
Supervisor McClure.
Jay, back to the sheriff and the jail. When I look at this and I'm looking at almost $3 million in the hole, is that, you're saying that's all AB 109?
No, no. The, the cost of that budget is going to be reflected in here, the general fund cost. What you'll see with AB 109 was approximately $400,000. It was an in custody drug treatment program that can now be bypassed. Each inmate, for each hour that, or day that they're in that custody program, the state reimbursed the sheriff. And he reflected that in his budget through revenue. AB 109 gave them an avenue to actually spend less time in jail and avoid that program. So, at this point, they're avoiding the program. That was to the tune of about $400,000. There was another revenue in his budget. We've asked him to go out and meet with the, those affected by the billing and get as much out of that billing as possible. And that has to do with dispatch.
But we had an, we had an inherent $2 million budget shortage? Or how did we get that other $2 million?
We have a cost that we pay out of our general fund for public safety.
And that's the sheriff's cost that we have in.
Yeah. Each, each budget has a cost. Most of those, obviously, are general fund costs that are discretionary.
And that $400,000 wasn't a new cost because of AB 109. It was actually a reduction in revenues, which, by the way, we are working at through CSAC and the sheriffs and probation to see if there isn't a way under realignment to be, to fix it and to gain that revenue back.
Yeah. For the purposes of this year, obviously, without that, we're in a pretty steady position. Like you said, the budgeting would have been pretty well handled from all the departments. That one puts us in the hole in that sense. But yes, CSAC, the probation officers, the sheriff, our advocates...
I was just concerned, but I wasn't thinking about our share of general cost to take care... That's what is reflected in that.
Well, it's a good point because people may not understand just how much...